All right, I'm calling this meeting to order Ms. Hilbrick. I can call roll. Oh, there you are.
Is that mic on?
It is now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Councilman Deligarza?
I am present.
Mayor Protim Solis?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Loughlin?
Here.
Mayor Bucknay?
Here.
And I do not see Councilman Young at this time.
He will be here. He's on the way.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you and welcome to the December 8th City Council Workshop.
December 10th.
December 10th, thank you. Is it really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I hope you didn't have anything going on today.
Well, welcome to the December 10th City Council Workshop. We started on time and I expect us to finish at 5:00. And on time.
All right.
So I'm gonna turn it over to you. You've got a lot to go through.
We do, but just really quickly, I'd like to turn it back to you, just in case there's any citizens' communication or items from council.
Yes, I'll open it up from items from council.
I have something.
Yes, sir.
I plead. Hello?
Now, just.
Don? Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. I placed a thing from Flower Mound on everybody's place. I had brought up about 25 mile an hour speed limits for residential zones twice. Once a long time ago and once when we discussed speed humps and speed bumps. And I was under the impression that we couldn't do it for some reason, that we could only go to 30 miles an hour unless an engineering study was done. And maybe I misunderstood, but Andrew was nice enough to send me a link to this article about Flower Mound. And they have been doing 25 mile an hour speed limits for a long time. They've let their neighborhoods vote on 25 mile an hour speed limits. In fact, now they're, they just voted that all residential neighborhoods be 25 miles per hour. I would like at a session coming up, if we could discuss options for maybe neighborhoods to vote on going to 25 miles an hour, or if we'd like all residentials to go 25 miles an hour, or for example, we put it on the ballot and let the people decide. But I think we need to discuss, council needs to discuss it.
Okay.
And so if we could put it on a future calendar, I appreciate it.
You want it on regular meeting?
Yes, please.
All right, sure. Anything else from council? All right, close the items from council and open it up to citizens' communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please address the microphone up there. You have three minutes. No one's sprinting up there. I'll close citizens' communication and we'll go into our main feature.
All right, good afternoon, mayor and council. We do have a pretty good agenda for you this afternoon. It's a lot of content. And so hopefully, everybody had a Wheaties for breakfast. The first topic that we will talk about is an update on the 2035 comp plan. And so I'll turn it over to Julie for that short presentation.
Good afternoon. There's three clickers up here. Do I just get to take my pick? Okay, sorry. So yes, I have a quick presentation on our action agenda, providing y'all with a quarterly update, which will be really short, but then I will go into a little bit more lengthy presentation on how we're going to keep you updated on our action agenda. So since council adopted the action agenda in February, we have completed about a little over 20% of the items. And these are items that have definite completion status, such as establish a quarter record, check done, or create a downtown master plan. We all know that that check, we've done that, completed that. But the line share, most of the action agenda items, over 50%, are items that we have completed a component of it, but they're always out, gonna be ongoing items, such as, you know, beautification efforts. The street it's in friends looks beautiful, check, we completed it. But that's not the only place in the city of Victoria that needs to be beautified. And so a lot of our action agenda items are things that we're gonna have to continue to focus on. And then there are other 22% are in progress. And then two items have not been started yet, and that's in relation to some convention and visitor bureau items. So how we're going to make sure that council and the public is informed of what all the actions we are taking and how we're implementing the action agenda in the future and going forward, is we're going to publish quarterly updates. We'll link that PDF to our website. You know, we can email it out through City View. And those, that brief little newsletter will have all of the items that we made some significant progress with over the last quarter. And we also then developed, or more fully developed, our comprehensive plan website. So we tried to make it a little bit more dynamic or interactive. So we listed all of our action agendas, items by their different categories. And I have a video that, how do I get that to play, James? Oh, it's playing. So if you navigate, it shows you how to navigate towards our comprehensive plan website. And again, we have the full plan on there, as well as, you know, our old plan, all the information. And then there's a tab that says, ties to our action agenda. We also put our old action agenda on there with information on everything that we completed on our old action agenda, which used to just be kind of a boring document that was emailed to council with different progress notes in a table format. And so we've since listed them all out and then we provided hyperlinks to provide more details on what those action agendas are. So sometimes those hyperlinks will go to a study or a report. Sometimes those hyperlinks will go to a specific webpage. It really just depends on what information is out there on what we linked it to. But we tried to make it as dynamic as possible and to give the public as much information as they could possibly want in going to the website. So I think that's just on a loop and it'll keep playing. So next steps, what are we going to do going forward? We're gonna continue these quarterly updates. We're gonna continue to keep the website updated. And then, you know, measuring and promoting is essentially the goal there. And then as far as our next action agenda, we originally said, well, let's redo them after we do all of the master plans. But as we've updated or adopted all of these master plans, they all have implementation sections that have a lot of low hanging fruit that are making us all really busy, you know, depending on what came out of that master plan. And so we're gonna really focus on some of those implementation items on the master plan and get through this action agenda 2023. And by then, we anticipate that that, those low hanging fruits out of those master plan implementations will kind of die down. We've completed a lot of those. And then we'll need to really reprioritize and take stock and say, okay, what are these, what items left are most important for us and reestablish a new action agenda going forward in 2024. And some of y'all might also wonder, when should we anticipate a new comprehensive plan? That's actually something that really, I think, comes out organically. I think as we start, continue to do these, you know, two-year action agendas, as we get to a point where we don't have a lot of inspiration from the remaining action agenda items, that's the time to start talking about a new comprehensive plan. But with these master plans and with the work that we still have to do in our existing comprehensive plan, I really anticipate us discussing a new comp plan about 2030, between 2030 and 2035. And so that's what we've been working on and what we continue to plan to work on, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We will send an email to council with the link, so you can go through all of that yourself. One of the big priority items with this is, of course, how can we better tell our story of what's going on? And we just wanna be more transparent with the work that we've been doing and continue to do. And so we think this website will help us achieve that. And to Julie's point on the quarterly updates, that's just an opportunity for us to showcase the work that staff has done and answer any questions that you might have about the work that we've done or planned to do. So happy to take any questions that you might have on anything related to the 2035 comp plan or the action agenda process.
What was the year before that we did? Was it 2025? Action plan was the previous one?
The original was 2020.
Was it 2020? I couldn't remember.
Victoria 2020.
Yeah, Victoria 2020, and that was adopted when?
I believe 2005.
2001, originally.
Early 2000s.
We truly do think there's plenty to keep us busy for the rest of this decade as we roll out and get into the weeds over time with the different master plans. And of course, there's a few exercises that we still have to go through as well. So we just think it's important that we give those master plans an opportunity to get to the stage where we talk about them in respect to action agendas. And so that's what we plan to do going into '24.
So this is retrospective of what we've already accomplished?
Correct. You mean this update?
The present, yeah, the presentation.
Yeah, if you go back to, I don't know if you can go back to your first couple of slides, but the first couple of slides are intended to reflect what was achieved in the last quarter.
Okay, and will, will it be comprehensive of things? Or, I mean, will we wipe it out and start with the next quarter? Or will we be able to see things that have happened in the quarter before? Is this just gonna be this quarter?
So no, it will.
So we can, we can provide the collection of the various quarterly updates. We actually put them up on the site as well.
Yeah, so there's a space designated on the website for us to continue to keep, just build every quarterly update, keep those as an archive. And then the links and the actual action item agendas, as we work on those, those will constantly be updated to the most relevant information. But the actual PDF of the quarterly update will be archived on the website.
Can you go back to the?
Okay, so this is just a screenshot of the PDF. And I guess it's in the video. Can you just play the video?
Can you go back? I'm trying to get back to the actual quarterly, quarterly update.
Oh, this.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. Sorry.
So these are the items that we're claiming as completed.
Yes.
And we're giving ourselves credit, if we can call it that. Items completed.
Slide 1, 2, and then this picture 3, those are all screenshots of the PDF quarterly update that will be linked on our website. And so you'll, you know, always be able to access that. And then even if you go and look at the, you know, we see we have Explorer Victoria at a tourism board. When you click on the actual agenda item, it'll take you to the tourism board, you know, page. And so they'll both be updated and available at all times.
All right, I think we're good then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you Maggie too. Where are you, Maggie?
Yes, I'm, I'm, sorry, you're right. I totally skipped over that. I need to give credit completely to this website for Maggie Bergeron, our planning administrator. It is the most tedious activity, building websites. But she has spent literally the last quarter doing that and has done an amazing job, so we really appreciate her.
Thank you. All right.
Ms. Hilbrick, will you please note that Dr. Young came in?
Thank you.
All right, so can we move on to the next item? All right, we'll do that. So the next item is talking about our CIP. And I'm gonna have Todd come up and spearhead this conversation. Last year at this meeting, he strategically was out sick and wasn't able to be here in person. And so we made sure that strategically he would be healthy for today's conversation. And so he's gonna spearhead our conversation, and I don't wanna steal any thunder away from him. So I'll only make a couple of comments before he begins. One of those being that, as I've discussed with, with you in our one-on-one meetings, we are not gonna be, or we're proposing not talking about fiscal year '27. Normally, when we take these five-year cycles, this would be the meeting, or this would be the spring, that we would start talking about plugging projects into fiscal year '27, sort of five years in advance. But I think it's appropriate that we put a little pause to that and focus on our existing planning window, because we have some objectives, some goals that we'd like to meet within the existing planning window, which runs from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '26. And so you won't hear us talk about plugging anything into a CIP for fiscal year '27 intentionally, because there's plenty to talk of items that we wanna do over the next few years. And you'll also notice that as we go through these projects, that there are already a lot of projects that are scheduled that we need to have conversations about. And so we wanna prioritize what's going on now and what we plan to do in the next few years before we start talking longer term. So don't be surprised at that. And I also wanna give kudos to Todd and everybody involved with putting this presentation together, which I know involved Ken, Mike, Gilbert, because it's a labor of love. And hopefully, you enjoy seeing some of the new information that he'll go through, including the Gantt chart that's in front of you, providing an update on the fiscal year '22 projects. So a lot of work went into this. Again, this is all part of our effort to attempt to professionalize and be more intentional with our CIP development process. You'll also notice, leading into Todd's presentation and Gilbert's debt capacity presentation, that we also intentionally are talking about CIP projects before we talk about finances, because we wanna take an approach that says, let's figure out what's important, let's figure out what's a priority for us, and then let us come up with some finance strategies to achieve those objectives, as opposed to limiting ourselves with, speaking of finances first, I think it's important we talk about the things that need to get done first. And so that's a shift, to certain extent, of the way that maybe we've approached conversations in the past. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Todd, so he can walk you through this hour-long conversation.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you for that, Jesus. And again, I wanted to reiterate that as well, that thank you to Jesus, Gilbert, Mike, and Ken for, you know, the guidance, the input that went into just, you know, the CIP as well as the presentation. So, yeah, we have, it's a pretty detailed presentation. And so without further ado, I'll get started. So. So today's objectives, I wanted to start off this afternoon by, well, first of all, good afternoon, everyone. I forgot to say that, but anyway. But yeah, I wanted to start out this morning, or this afternoon, and kind of give you an update on just the progress of projects that we've already, that were approved as part of the 2022 version of the CIP, right? So these are projects that we're currently in the process of executing right now. So we'll go through some of those projects. That's, that's kind of what the Gantt chart is there in front of you, and we'll get into that here shortly. Secondly, I wanted to, I wanna do a recap or refresher of the CIP as to where it was left off in August. When we last came, came to you guys to review the CIP, we made a few changes to that 2022 version. And I just wanna kind of recap those changes and kind of discuss kind of a good starting point for that. And then we'll go into some more detailed proposed changes and to why we're proposing these changes. Number four, I wanna talk about, this is important, we'll talk about some scope changes that are, you know, that, that we've kind of identified as we get into some more discussions and more investigation in some of these projects. We've kind of identified a few scope changes and cost impacts, and so we wanna go over those. And then number five, we wanna talk about our goals and our objectives for, for the remaining planning window and how those kind of fit into, into the CIP. And then lastly, I'll do a quick recap and a, and a time, just kind of a timeline of where we're at, so. So I wanna, I wanna turn your attention to the handout that you have there in front of you. It's the project Gantt chart. Looks similar to this right here. So this is, this is a high-level Gantt chart that I put together, again, that talks about, or that's gonna show you the fiscal year '22 projects that, that were, that were approved as part of the, as part of the fiscal year '22 budget. And so these projects that we're currently executing right now. So the Gantt chart that you have in front of you is the, is the holistic picture of all, of all projects, right? These are all the projects that were approved for '22. And so this is just a, a kind of high-level overview of where we're at today in terms of these projects and executing these projects, right, in terms of a letting schedule. So I didn't go into putting every single task associated with these projects. For example, you know, there's numerous things going on every day when it comes to these projects, right? Whether it's communication back and forth, where we at in terms of, of, you know, identifying waterline locations, things like that. This is just a high-level letting process that shows you kind of where we're at in terms of requesting, you know, I'm sorry, bidding the project, advertising bidding, bringing the, bringing the project to council, or bringing the contract to council, et cetera. So I wanna go over just a quick, a few of these projects. Obviously, we can talk about any one of them that you, that you want to on the, on the schedule there. But I wanna just kind of highlight a few here up on the screen. And so, this thing's got a pointer or not, but. Anyway, so, so just if you turn your attention to the, to the screen up here, we have, we've got some, some design consultant contracts that we're gonna bring to council on Tuesday. So that's, that's quite a few projects from 2022. We've got the Dairy Road design, we've got the Laurent Street waterline design, the High Service Connection out there for, for the service water treatment plant. And then we have the three residential design projects, right? That's Tanglewood, Phase 1, we've got College Park, and Bon Air. So all those design contracts, we've already received proposals from, from those, from those consultants. We've negotiated, right, negotiated the proposal. We have now got an unexecuted contract that we're gonna bring to council. We're gonna do that on the 14th of December, that's next Tuesday. And so, again, these are just some projects that are right around this, this time right now. We've, obviously, if you look at the schedule, you'll see that there's projects we've done, we're already completed. Tasks are completed on, we've already bought Mill and Overlay, we've bought the residential street design projects, I'm sorry, residential street maintenance projects. So you'll see kind of, this is just an overall picture of how we've got things spread out throughout the course of the year. So the next thing I wanna talk about is some of the construction projects that are coming up here in the next, the next month or two. And so those projects are, for example, we'll talk about Ben Wilson Corridor Project, the Kelly Creek Drainage, that's the, that's the Twin 90 Drainage Project that we have in Northcrest, and the Fire Station 1 remodel. So as you can see on the screen here, we're currently in the process of, those projects are in the advertising phase, and we'll be opening bids on December 15th for all three of those projects. And hopefully, beyond that, negotiating with the contractor and bringing a contract to council on the latter part of the second meeting in January. So again, just to recap, this is just a high-level picture of the letting process for each one of these projects. Any questions so far?
Are there any, are there any specific, this thing on? Are there any specific projects that council is interested in taking a deeper dive in? We didn't wanna assume, specific to projects that are in fiscal year '22.
I have a question. In the Gantt chart, we have the citywide LED street lighting replacement project, but we also just approved the grant application.
Correct.
So we aren't gonna start anything like it says in here in February, right?
So. Go for it.
So we are, we are gonna currently go ahead and execute that project as if we haven't received the grant yet. The direction was to go ahead and proceed with, with that project. And if we get the grant, then we'll, then we can, we can reply, we can apply the rest of the scope at that time. Right now, we can only do about 1,800 lights with the 250,000 that's allocated now. So if we wanna go ahead and get started on the south side of town with that 250,000 that was allocated for '22, go ahead and get that project rolling, get AEP a contract and get them started. And then if we get the grant, we can tackle, they can go ahead and tackle all the lights in one year if we had the funding. So we'll, we'll revisit that if, in fact, we do receive that grant. And I think, and the grant included a few more things. It included some, for example, on Rio Grande, on Business 59, you know, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but they've, they've, they've come out, I think it was a Tech Dot or AEP, they, they, they put the 14-foot arms light, you know, right? So you go down, you go down a lot of these streets and there might be a six-foot arm and the light's hanging over the curb. It's not actually out over the street. And so I, it was, I came with the idea, so I think we need to kind of follow our TNP, our Thrift Row Master Plan. And why don't we take, if it's an arterial or a collector or secondary arterial, et cetera, let's standardize how we're gonna include these arms. We don't, you know, if you're going down Stockborough, that's a five-lane road, five-lane roadway cross-section. We should have 14-foot arms, so that way the light is actually out over the, you know, over the road itself and not just kind of right out hanging over the curb. So anyway, that, that's included in the grant. Now, that's not, that wasn't initially included in the, in the CIP as part of the 250,000 over the course of five years. It was, it was just, hey, we're gonna change out all the lights, and what does it cost to do that? And so that was, that's where the 250 came from, but now if we get the grant.
Yeah, and I'll just briefly add too, that it took us, it took an effort to get AEP to the point where they are now in terms of them doing work, partnering with us to do this work. And so we don't want to slow that train down, simply because we applied for the grant. And so we wanna take advantage of that momentum that we built with AEP through this partnership and get them going. So that was part of our rationale too. If you're gonna talk, talk into the mic.
That is correct, Jesus. So it's a great partnership with AEP. But again, we didn't wanna slow down the process. If we get the grant, we can do even more. So that's really the essence of the, that's the answer. If we get the grant, we can do more. But we will start with the initial project with the CIP funds.
And that grant, we should know by the end of this next year at least, right?
No, that grant we should know in the spring.
Okay.
The grant that was gonna take a year was a different grant, wasn't an EDA grant. The EDA grants have a much quicker turnaround.
Okay.
Is that correct, Katie? Yes.
And so if we do receive the grant, we will free up a million dollars?
Well, we still, well, we still have our match. So currently in the CIP, we have $250,000 every year for five years. Our match, I can't remember what our match would be.
Match is about $441,000.
Okay, which is a couple of years worth.
Yeah.
So it would free up $750,000 in the CIP-ish. Do you wanna add something? Talk into the mic, talk into the mic, if you're gonna speak. He has his own mic.
I have my own mic, man.
How did you get a lapel mic?
I am Gilbert P. Reina. Provided by Fashion Show. No, you're correct. I'll make sure everybody understands, we're getting the grant, we're augmenting with our funding. And if we wanna augment the project itself, 'cause Todd, I don't know if you mentioned, but you got, we got clear brush off the lines, and that's extra cost. So if you wanna augment it, the other funding can go towards that too as well. So that is coming down the line. So we got time to make the decision. I'm sorry you didn't get one, but make a note, Ashley.
It was in his budget, Jesus.
Don't touch it.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna talk about the ones that are gonna come to us December 14th?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything.
The projects that are, you're gonna bring to council for.
On December 14th, yeah.
You're gonna talk about those, because did some of them come in over or under? Where are we with that? Or are you gonna get to that part? I don't wanna ask a question before you get to it, but.
Sure. We, if you have a very specific question, I'd encourage you to ask the question.
Okay.
With the item being on the agenda on the 14th, we do plan on Ken making a presentation as part of presenting the agenda item, awarding all of those contracts.
Well, there were some items, I looked at the, the stuff you sent us, and like Dairy Road came back more than was projected. And some other ones came back more than projected.
That's actually, that's actually, that part of, that's actually in this presentation.
Okay, so I'll wait till you get to that.
Dairy Road specifically is, yeah, is in, is in the, in this presentation, so we'll, we'll cover that one. Is there anything else, other specific project that you, any question, that was the one?
No, it's just specific, but looking at all the projects with the engineer, is the city. I do appreciate that from a taxpayer standpoint. I don't know what the cost savings that are among all the projects, but the fact that we're doing them in-house is, is good to see.
Yes, and I think finding that balance, I think, is gonna be a priority.
Sure.
Moving forward, because one of the things that I, well, planning on talking later, but I'll mention it now, is that you'll notice as we go through this presentation, we're in essence suggesting we wanna do more during this planning window in order to meet some very specific goals. Well, by doing more means that we need to have a conversation about how we actually go through the implementation of doing more, right? So for example, on Tuesday, we have. So for example, on Tuesday, we have three large-ish contracts that are going for engineering services, one which would be with Urban, one would be with Civil Core, which of course are the local ones that we partner with all the time. But we're actually going to be also proposing entering into an engineering contract with a company, with a different company. Because I think it's important that we have a variety of options as it relates to this. Because for, because let's say we get to the day where we have two large thoroughfare projects going on at the same time, two large thoroughfare projects needing to be designed in the same year. As an example, it would make sense to obviously have more options to be able to award those. But at the same time, there might be some opportunity to do some of that engineering work in-house. We currently, our staff already is fully capable of, of doing the engineering for non-reconstruction projects, we do that already. But then even for some of the smaller scale reconstruction projects, we do in-house. North Heights, perfect example. North Heights was completely engineered in-house. But projects, projects like Phase One for Tanglewood, that's coming to council on Tuesday, is outsourced because it's just a much larger project. And so we need to at some point have a conversation about that balance because it could theoretically save us millions of dollars through the lifespan of our planning window if we simply just took some of that work and did it in-house. One of the strategies that Mike is still in the process of finalizing for us is a proposal that we would bring before you sometime in the spring to completely rethink the way that we go about budgeting for capital projects. Because it's become common that cities through their, their allocation of CIP, we self-assess ourselves a fee or percentage to help fund an engineering and a project management, capital improvement implementation operation. Because also keep in mind that the more street projects that we do, that's more inspectors that we need to be able to be out there ensuring that the contractor is doing what they're supposed to be doing. And so yes, we all want to do more, but there are other things that we need to adjust in order to successfully be able to do more. And that's a conversation that we want to have in the spring. But it goes to your point, because that is included in that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is Civil Core and Civil Tech the same company or not?
No, no. Thanks, Ken. And, and, and soon actually that confusion will no longer exist because Civil Tech actually got, I don't know if they got bought out or merged, they got acquired by a much larger engineering firm called what?
Woolpert.
Woolbert.
Woolpert.
Woolpert. So hopefully that'll make it easier for Ken moving forward.
Well, I'm sorry.
So I just have a quick terminology question as we're talking about City Victoria and different groups. On the Riverside Dog Park, it says that the group is Luck. Is that we're hoping something will happen or is that actually the name of the company?
That's actually the name of the, the landscape architect company.
Okay.
It's Luck.
Yeah, Luck Design, they're also designing the Duck Pond project as well.
Okay, that's why I was wondering if we were just kind of hoping.
Cross your finger. Yeah, no, good question though. Okay, if y'all don't have any more questions right now on these projects, obviously feel free to take this document with you. We are still trying to also figure out how we can take this type of information and also have it on our website. Because we also want to make sure that the public has access to understanding where we are with our capital projects for transparency sake. So we're still working on finalizing how that looks, but this is the first step. So we're very excited about that. But in any case, carry on, Todd.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, oh, there it goes. Gotcha, okay. All right, counsel. So now that we talked about the, the projects that we were executing in 22, I kind of wanted to turn your attention to the screen here. This is, this is the, the project, this is the total five-year CIP as it was on August 17th this past year. Where we came and we, we had a few changes, right? That was when we included the Tanglewood design, Phase One design, we included a few other projects, just to jog your memory, we had the additional funding for the fire station remodel, we had the twin 90s, we, we changed East in addition to a seal coat, et cetera. So, so again, at that point in time, we amended the, amended the, the CIP and we, we finished off with a, with a total project cost of 123 million dollars at that time over that five-year CIP. So again, we're, we're executing 22 projects right now. And so I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of, of where we were at on August 17th. So now I want to talk about proposed changes for the remaining planning window, right? The remaining, remaining four-year planning window we are in now. So you may recall, we had, in the CIP, in the fiscal year 22 version of the CIP, we had a wastewater treatment plant clarifier project. This project included design in 22 for 160,000 dollars. We had included, there's four clarifiers. We included a clarifier in each year after that, so one each year. And we were going to rehab those clarifiers, I think the tune of about 450,000 each year. So a total of 1.8 million. What you don't see, or what was not in the CIP was also a budgeted item for a bar screen that was going to be replaced, which was roughly a million dollars. So 2.8 million dollars for that, for the, just to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant. Reason why we're, we're proposing a change to this project or, or a, I guess, kind of holding off on this project right now is because there's some, we, we want to, we want to clarify, I want to make sure that we're, we're looking at the correct technology for wastewater treatment plants, right? Can we, can we become more efficient in, in treating our effluent? Can we become more, can we increase the capacity of that plant? What, what does that technology look like? We need to have some conversations about that. You may recall that we had a, a energy savings RFQ that we sent out. We just got those qualifications in. We need to review those and, and kind of meet with those consultants and just kind of see what we can do in terms of, of creating, having a more efficient wastewater treatment plant. And what does that look like, right? What kind of, what kind of process, technology, innovations, things that have changed? Those clarifiers, they've been in service since the seventies. And so rehabbing those clarifiers may not be the best technology now. There, there may be some new technology that we need to, to investigate. So there's a potential there for, for again, more efficient technology, again, increased capacity and therefore the energy savings as well, right? So the more efficient you are, the less you pay to operate and et cetera, that plant. So we're proposing to kind of put that project on hold for right now until we can really clarify what that looks like. The second one I want to talk about is the power secure generators. We have, right now we have a releasing two generators, one at the wastewater treatment plant.
Excuse me, back on the clarifiers, how long are you proposing putting it off? I mean, we've been hearing about this for a long time.
So our, our intent is to take, assuming that we confirm that pursuing an energy savings approach is the approach, we plan on having that conversation at a council meeting in January.
Okay.
To potentially partner with a company to come in and officially do all of the work that needs to be done related to that. And you may recall in one of our one-on-one meetings, I talking about the opportunity to pursue an energy savings approach to this so that we explore using the savings to help pay for the project as opposed to just through a traditional revenue bond, the way that we would do it if it stayed on. And so the timeline would be entering into that relationship with this company in January. It would take them anywhere from six to eight months to finalize the plan, which would include some pre-engineering work. And then it would just be a matter of then the implementation piece after that. So realistically, we would, we hope to have a better idea of it once May comes around, which is when we finalize things. But that's kind of more or less, it's kind of hard to say, other than saying that we would enter into an agreement with this company in January and then six months later, we would have a much more clearer picture of what it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if that helps or not.
It, it does. I was kind of hearing it as we're going to put it off and.
Yeah.
We may never hear about it again.
Well, and there's been a couple of projects that we have put off at the regional wastewater treatment plant on purpose, because I think we can group them all together under this approach of energy savings. And to Todd's point, you know, that technology piece is, is critical. As an example, currently both of our wastewater, both of our wastewater treatment plants don't operate using the same technology. And so currently we have to even just from an operational standpoint, have operators learn two completely different systems. They're not even on the same SCADA system, from my understanding. And so everything is just so different. So rather than just going in there and saying, we just replace the screen or just replace the clarifier, you know, we need to have a much more sophisticated review of all of this to make sure that the final product is up to date just with technology and obviously works together with the other wastewater treatment plant. We're already doing some of that because you may recall that we're also going through some pre-engineering work to update our SCADA system that's also very antiquated, or at least some elements of it are. And so we expect that report to come be finalized in March. And so in March, the SCADA piece hopefully will become a little clearer for us. But that's the reason why we're wanting to put this on hold. Let's look at the bigger picture because we'd be better off for that doing so long-term.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So again, right back to the, the power secure generators. So right now, we, we're, we've got two generators that are on a lease program for, on a 20-year note, these generators. One generator is at the wastewater treatment plant that we just talked about. And the other generator is at the water plant number three pump station. Anyway, so these, these generators on the lease program, it's a 20-year lease, initially, our, our goal is, not initially, but our goal is to go ahead and, and pay those generators off. And that was kind of why we had put them in the CIP initially was to, let's, let's talk about allocating some money to go ahead and pay these generators off. I think the reason behind that was we wanted to make sure that we were recouping the, the kickback that ERCOT gives, right? I think ERCOT, and you may want to add to this Gilbert, but, but I think ERCOT, they, they will give us, they will pay us money whenever those generators need to come online, whenever they say that they need, we need to put them online. Right now, that, that money's going to Power Secure because we're leasing them from Power Secure, right? So right now, we're, we're proposing, let's, let's, let's reallocate that funding to some more higher priority projects and let's continue to lease those generators for right now and, and reallocate that funding that we were going to use to pay them off to some newer priorities. And we'll show you what those priorities, priorities are here shortly.
Can I add something?
You sure can.
Is it on? Just want to let them know I got one. Kickback's the wrong word, but anyway. Kickback's the wrong word. As we talk about this internally, it's like the rate of return is going to take 11, 12 years down the road, so we can still wait three, four years until that return can come in. So there's no rush right now. Going back to what Mr. Garza said, those funding can be applied to wastewater plant situation too as well. Does that make sense? That's over a million dollars.
Correct.
It's my on-off switch over there.
So environmental office building, this was a project that we had included in fiscal year 22 CIP version. And right now, so that, that project was, that project we had potentially looked at moving Daryl Esack and his crew, his team out of 700 Main over to Southwest Bend, Jordan, where the solid waste facilities are. Right now, we think it makes more sense to, to kind of wait for the facilities assessment that we're to shake out and kind of see what that looks like before we go and, and move personnel and, and just kind of see what that holistic picture looks like. Fire Station Five relocation, we're in the process right now redoing the remodel for Fire Station One. So right now, it kind of makes more sense, let's go ahead and real, reallocate that money over to potential proposed public safety headquarters. And then golf course greens renovation, we're applying, we applied for an EDA grant on that one. And I think those funds were coming from VSCDC and general fund. So right now, we're proposing to put that project kind of hold until we hear if we get the grant or not, right? I think Mr. Garza said that we, we would hear back early 2022. So at that time, we can kind of see how that plays into the CIP when we come back to you in March with the, with the, with the CIP book.
Yeah, and on top of that, we, we think we might be able to also fund these improvements outside of a traditional CIP. And so we want the opportunity to reevaluate all of the options on how to fund these improvements at the golf course as opposed to just assuming that, you know, let's put them in the CIP now and issue debt. I mean, there might be opportunities with the golf fund as it grows as an example or other avenues that we can pursue. So we obviously are still dedicated to the golf course and wanting to make it better. But we're in essence suggesting the roughly, what was it, million dollars? That was in the five-year planning window for the greens, let's pull that out and so we can figure out and understand all of our options and in turn utilize those million dollars for other higher priority needs. Any questions on any of those five changes? Todd will go through a recap of the budget impact of all of these five changes.
Okay. So just like Mr. Garza said, this is sort of a, a high level recap of, of all the, the funding changes associated with those, with those projects. So you've got in front of you there, you've got a, a handout that, that shows this same slide right here. And so basically, I don't want to go through every single one of these, but you, you can see that these are the deductions from each, each fiscal year that translates to taking those projects out right now. And so what I wanted to reiterate is that now we have a fresh starting point of 114 million, 738,000 dollar CIP for this remaining planning window. That's, that's where we're at in terms of current project cost estimates.
Can you go back? So I just want to reiterate, so where we left off in August of 2021, we had a five-year planning window total of 123 million. With the five changes that Todd just talked about, it brings a new five-year total to 114. So we've, in essence, are you going to add something to that?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So obviously that creates some opportunity to do some different projects.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Cool. Do you have a question?
I'm just processing it. I, I hear what you're saying and I didn't interpret it as giving us opportunity for more projects. I thought it was just getting it back down to a number that we could, could manage. So I'm glad to hear that we can manage the 123.
Yes, and I think it all depends on the types of projects too, right? And we'll talk a little bit about that when Gilbert talks about debt capacity, because we do have some specific questions and some things for you to reflect on. That'll get to the point on what number do we feel comfortable with on a yearly basis, not only in terms of managing, but also in terms of issuing debt. And so we'll, we'll hit on that when Gilbert talks about his piece. All right, Todd.
Okay, so now I want to talk to you guys about some projects that, that are still in the remaining planning window, but, but need further, further scope development, further discussion. The first one I want to talk about is Lone Tree Acres subdivision. So initially, the original scope, drainage scope on this project was to construct an outfall from the, from the Lone Tree Acres subdivision over to Lone Tree Creek. And that's kind of depicted there in, in the orange mark on the, on the screen there. That was what the initial, initial engineering estimate was based on, was that orange mark. And the, and the drainage scope, or excuse me, the drainage cost estimate was 3.3 million. We were, that was in the CIP for 2022. So currently, right now, engineering, we're, we're in the process of engineering this project, urban engineering is, is, has come to us with some recommendations along with the master plan recommendation that you guys saw last night at the council, or excuse me, Tuesday at council. And so the, the master plan recommendation along with engineering is based on what you see there in the blue. That's, that's extending the outfall from the north, northern part up there above, above the north, excuse me, the Lone Tree subdivision, all the way down south across the, that vacant property there into Lone Tree Creek. So this allows that entire neighborhood to drain. That's what it's going to take to, to allow this whole entire neighborhood to drain. So the additional, the additional drainage impact right now is 2.13 million on top of the 3.3 that we'd already had allocated. The street portion, not changed. That, that's still, that's still, that scope is still the same as it was before. So as we move forward on this project, I think the, the goal here is to, is to understand that we need to kind of get a bigger picture of, of what, how we can allocate funding for this project, maybe phase it out. I'll be working with. it out. I'll be working with Gilbert on how to do that. And we'll come back to you in March with... Yes, ma'am.
So the proposed change would just be the blue or would it include the original orangey brownie line?
No, the original orange was the original scope.
So that's gone.
And that's no longer in the picture. The proposed change is to construct the outfall, what you see there in blue.
And that would make it consistent with what's in the drainage master plan that was recently adopted. The drainage master plan that was adopted called for other improvements along this area. And we'll happy to share with you some of those more informations as a refresher. I don't know, it might be in Ken's slides later again. Okay. Where you'll be able to see the big picture that was in the drainage master plan. We've been intentionally delaying completion of the engineering of this project, knowing that the conclusion of the drainage master plan was going to suggest something much bigger. And we didn't want to obviously spend that money until we could have a conversation with you about whether you wanted to stick to the original scope, which is what's in, I see it as mustard. If it's orange, I am colorblind.
Whatever it is.
But in any case, to seek some direction from council on whether we stick with the original scope, which only benefits really just Lone Tree Acres and a few of those streets versus if we do the entirety of the blue and bring it down, it now benefits some of the area south of Lone Tree, which is, you can kind of see a red rectangle in another group of homes that's there. So that would help set the foundation for improvements there. And then with it cutting across in the middle of that property where it does in blue, also helps take out some of that property out of the floodplain and makes it developable. At that point, that property is right up against the frontage of US 59. And so obviously, one of the objectives of the drainage master plan was to make drainage improvements, to make land more developable. And so now it goes from being a drainage project that only benefits a small neighborhood to being a larger project that benefits more residents, but also helps with the developability of the land.
And does help that neighborhood as well.
Absolutely. Yeah. And so that's the type of direction, if you will, that we would eventually seek from council. Do we stick with the original scope and only benefit the neighborhood? Or do we expand the scope and benefit the neighborhood plus some added residents by attracting the folks living south of Lone Tree and then making some land developable? So food for thought.
When you put it like that, that makes it a really tough decision.
But it's really all about priorities, right?
It's just money.
On the cost, are we going to be replacing the 3.3 million with 2.1?
No, it's an addition.
Are we going to be in addition to?
Correct.
So it'd be 5.43.
Correct. It would be in addition.
And I have a slide where I'll sum up all these changes, the scope changes and cost estimate changes. Once we go through all the projects, there's just a handful here. And then we'll sum all that up. So you can kind of see the impact from a big picture.
How does that alter the completion timeline?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
How does that alter the completion timeline?
Well, I think it depends on when we finalize engineering. And so right now, the final engineering is sort of on hold until we get really good understanding on whether we're going to expand the scope or not. And so it's just a matter of whenever that direction comes. Now, we didn't want to assume, because obviously, there's other, as you'll see here in a second, there are other changes to scope that we want council to consider. And so we didn't want to assume and pick for you, you know, that, you know, there might be another scope change that is higher priority over this one, as an example. And so there's definitely not going to be easy decisions coming as part of the CIP conversation. And I apologize that we're making it hard by providing a lot of helpful information. But I think that's the kind of conversation that we need to be having more of, right? Between staff and you. So.
And on this project, the portion in blue that would be the extended, how much of that is existing easement? Or how much of that would have to be acquired?
Great question. So all of it?
Yeah, yes.
In essence, all of it would have to be acquired. There is already an existing small one, but it's not wide enough. And so regardless of which version we go with, would necessitate some easement acquisition. And depending on which project, depends on how much easement acquisition we seek from one property owner versus the other. So if we stick with the original, that's in mustard, that's an easement acquisition conversations with the sisters. If we go with the blue, then that easement conversation is with somebody else who coincidentally happens to have that property for sale currently. Gary. Thank you. I wasn't going to say names, but thank you.
How much, talking about land development, if the whole project is done, how much more land would be developable? Do we have an acreage or can you point out on that map?
Ken has that. And as he pulls that up, maybe we can answer that question when he shows this this project in a future slide.
Right, right.
All right. Next one, Todd?
Okay. So next project I want to talk to you about is Delmar Drive. You may remember in the 2022 CIP version, we brought to you the original scope of Delmar was to mill and overlay the section to the north there in fiscal year 23. That goes from Business 59 to East Rio Grande Street. And also mill and overlay the section to the south in fiscal year 24, from North Street to Pleasant Green. These recommendations came straight from the cost optimization approach that we got from IMS, the IMS study. However, before we do mill and overlay projects, one of the things that we're, Ken is doing is he's testing, he's doing soils testing on these streets to make sure that we can actually do a mill and overlay on that for that particular street.
He's taking a shovel out there. He's digging those holes by himself.
So ahead of knowing that we were going to be doing the fiscal year 23 portion up to the north, we've already done some soils testing in that area. And those testing, that testing indicated that that base material that's beneath that street right there cannot support a mill and overlay application. The heavy equipment associated with milling machines, laydown machines, et cetera, cannot, that base material cannot support that equipment. So we're proposing to remove the section for fiscal year 23 between Business 59 and East Rio Grande. And that therefore is a deduction of 637,000. This project kind of turns into, at that point, a maybe a thoroughfare discussion. And the reason being is that there's some uncertainty around, well, let me back up. That portion from 59 down to North Street is reconstruction. That's a reconstruction project. So before we put that in the CIP or really talk about what that looks like, we need to kind of understand what's going to happen with the Red River Drainage Project. The Red River Drainage Project suggests that we need to install a concrete.
Box culvert.
Box culvert, thank you. In that section there, in the fiscal year 23 section that I'm showing there in the circle. So before we make any recommendations, we kind of need to have a clearer picture of what that looks like and the funding, et cetera. So we're still suggesting to leave the fiscal year 24 mill and overlay. Ken's pretty confident that that section can still be mill and overlaid. However, we would still test that section next year ahead of the 2024 projects.
And just to, I guess, clarify, so in one of the later slides, Ken will also hit on the Red River Drainage Project. And this is going to be a critical decision point that at some point is going to come on whether that Red River Drainage Project is a priority and if it's going to be something that we fund. Because this, that first stretch identified there in fiscal year 23 is a perfect example of a project that obviously wouldn't make sense for us to spend any money on if in a couple of years, the street's going to get torn up to put some box culverts under it. And so that Red River Drainage Project's obviously been lingering around, you know, in people's minds, you know, for a while. And at some point, we're going to need some, I guess, clarity behind, okay, are we going to actually do it or are we not? Because if we're not, then we can then obviously take a conversation on Delmar, you know, to the next level. But if it is, then it just makes sense to not. Eventually, we'll have a conversation about thoroughfares and having a conversation about prioritizing thoroughfares. And maybe this one has to be considered as part of that. And obviously, you can always start at the bottom and work your way up to allow for the Red River Drainage Project to be completed, assuming that we do it. So a lot of things to consider as part of that. But in the meantime, let's just pull it out.
And one of the things I wanted to add to that also is that the section, the section that's between the two blue lines there on Delmar, that section was never, it was not part of the, ever part of the project because, or IMS didn't identify it because those streets in that section there are less than a 40 PCI score. So there was no pavement preservation that we could approach that we could take there. So again, there's, I think, 11 segments of blocks or segments in that section there that was scored below a 40. All right, Dairy Road, here we go. So Dairy Road, again, the original project was reconstruction between Salem Road and Whispering Creek Bridge. You may recall that we've already done the section to the north of the bridge all the way to Loop 463. I believe that was done about five years ago. And so the project originally was for reconstruction of the street, including curb and gutter, storm sewer and sidewalks. There was never, utilities were not in play at this point, right? Original engineering estimate was for design in '22 and construction in '23. We've contracted with Arduo Engineering. We're bringing that contract, oh, sorry, we haven't contracted yet, but we've already met with Arduo. We've got a proposal. We're bringing that contract to you on Tuesday, the 14th. The preliminary engineering for that particular project suggests that we may need to replace the 16-inch waterline beneath Dairy Road. This waterline has been in service since the 1970s. However, it wasn't in the original engineering estimate because we didn't replace it on the section to the north, right? At that time, when we did that project, that waterline was at a depth that we didn't have to, we didn't have to replace it. We didn't disturb it. All right, Ken tells me that.
And it's in good shape. It's never given us issues.
Right. The waterline's in good shape. The material has been proven to last years, number of years, right? So at this point in time, we don't feel that's important to change it or to replace it. However, the preliminary engineering suggests we should. We won't really know until we get the topographic survey and we do some, and we do some pothole digging to figure out exactly what depth that waterline is at. Once we determine the depth of the waterline and we set the elevation center line of the street, then we'll have an idea of whether or not during construction, we feel like that waterline is to be compromised or not. So right now, we're just bringing it to you for information. If we were need to replace the waterline, we're looking at a potential additional cost impact of 1.3 million.
Again, the line you're talking about with the potential is not the line under what you're proposing to do, but the line further north.
No, it's the line right under the dark blue.
It is that line. It's been in service since the 70s.
Correct. But that part that runs from roughly Hoover to the loop, that line wasn't replaced when that reconstruction project took place. Ken's thought as our city engineer was that, you know, it's in good shape. And it is. The issue's becoming more of the depth and the physical location of the line. And so that's becoming more of the issue more than the actual condition of the line, especially since it's a reconstruct. So, you know, visualize all of the digging up that's going to take place. And if that line isn't deep enough, well, then you're going to obviously disturb it. And at that point, you're just going to have to replace it.
Is there reason believed that it's not at the same depth as the part that's under the north that has been paved over? I mean.
Yeah. Yes, the answer is yes. Short answer is yes.
Okay.
Do we know if it's in the center of the road or on the side?
That I don't know. Is it in the center or on the side?
Along the edge.
Which edge?
Yeah, which edge?
On the east.
Top or bottom? Top or bottom? Thank you.
Against Castle Hills West. It's against Castle Hills West.
Yes.
Okay. So that if we later on did have to replace it, it's not in the middle of the road where we would have just reconstructed. That's what I was trying to make sure about.
Yeah, that's a good point. I don't know what that would look like at that time. I mean, we could obviously just replace it anyway, right? Regardless of whether we have to or not, just simply for the sake of the fact that we're going to be digging up the road. So I mean, I think we actually will plan on budgeting this additional amount simply to be on the safe side. But that's where we are with this project and potential scope change.
And just one thing, that waterline, I've talked with our crews, our operations divisions, and they say that is one of the best materials. It's one of the better made waterlines. It's a thick wall. It's never given us any problems. So their ideal solution would be leave it because it really has provided great service. And there's not really a section in this area where we have to make a lot of new taps. So that's the reason we're looking really serious at trying to leave it in there.
Any questions?
On cheesy's meeting, are we going to have to decide that for?
No.
Okay.
No. So a lot of the information that we're providing with you today, we'll talk about over the next course, the next few months through our one-on-ones. We will have another workshop in March, which will probably officially be the time when we would need some more specific direction on just how we shape up the CIP. Because you may recall that in May is when council typically gives the, you know, the head nod that yes, you know, we're good with that. And then that's where we plug into the budget development process in the summer. And so our intent is provide all of these potential changes to you today. And we'll also share some ideas on some things that we might want to add. And then over the course of the next few months, we talk about it. And then ultimately, council would approve it in May. We would do it at the first meeting in May because I want to make sure that it's with this council, that we finalize the CIP. So that's the timeline for that. So yes. That's.
Thank you.
I have a question.
But if you have thoughts, directions, now ideas, I mean, we welcome them, right? But yes, sir, go ahead.
They did an engineering study already on Dairy Road, right? You're going to bring it to us. But it didn't include the idea of the waterline?
The engineering contract will include the waterline.
Yes.
But the engineer themselves, the engineering company themselves have told us that, you know, as they start designing it, if it doesn't need to be, then they won't charge us the extra fee associated with the extra expense for the waterline.
Right. And we should know that hopefully by.
By March.
Yeah, when we come back to, we'll have that fine tuned by then.
I was just going to comment that there are some of us in the room that have been in service since the 70s and we're all still functioning.
With proper maintenance.
Yes, that's true.
All right, go on.
Thank you. So the next project we want to talk about was in the fiscal year 23 street maintenance program, Castle Hills West subdivision. You may remember that the cost optimization approach had identified a mill and overlay for King Arthur, Buckingham, Lamorak and Hawthorne Streets. So we've did some soils testing on that project, knowing that we, ahead of time, that we were going to be doing this project in fiscal year 23. The soils testing has come back and indicates that, again, the base material cannot support the overlay equipment, right? The mill and overlay equipment, similar to East End Edition and what we talked about on Delmar. Currently, we're recommending a seal coat for this entire subdivision. I think at this point, if we were to seal coat this entire subdivision, we could sort of buy ourselves that seven to 10-year window of maintenance and then consider potentially reconstructing this project, reconstructing the subdivision in a future planning window. Again, the utilities in this subdivision are in good shape. And if we were to do the seal coat for the entire neighborhood, it would be an additional cost of 555,000. That's on top of the 1.229. That's on top of the, of the 1.229 that we'd already allocated for the mill and overlay of those four streets. So, just wanted to add real quickly on this project that by doing, if we were to seal coat this entire neighborhood, we, we capture three more miles of street projects, right? We'll get into some goals here in a little bit, and I'll kind of clarify that. But, but this project, just wanted to capture that. We're capturing three more miles of streets, and we're also hitting six total street segments that score below 40 on the PCI score.
So, I'm assuming that during the soil testing, it was also determined that the base was good enough for a seal coat?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, that's, the seal coat equipment is not the same-
See, it's not the weight that I'm worried about. I'm just worried about, like, the problem we had in Woodway when we seal coated it and the base was already eroded. And there, I know there's some streets in here that were, I'd be very questioning, questionable about the base because of how they're, they're failing.
Does that mean we require some point repairs?
We're going to have some point repairs in there for that, for that section. But the biggest issue that we ran into in, in Woodway and the other ones in the past is vibration. It's when you put that, like, that hot mix down there on that pavement, you have to vibrate it. You have to put a vibratory equipment on there. And what that did does, and we talked it over with that soils company, is it shatters that base, basically just cracks it like a window, and it allows that moisture to pump up as you bring more heavy equipment in. You got to bring the belly dumps for the hot mix. You got to bring the lay down machine in. And at additional weight and vibration is what they're concerned about and what I was concerned about. And a seal coat is distributor, lay the rock, and you put a roller on it for a little bit, not vibratory, and you're done. And it's just less stress on that existing base. But the base is good. I mean, in reality, it's good base. It's that surface is-
So, Ken, how do we, how do we ensure that what happened in Woodway doesn't happen here?
We can get more testing done, but it's also just make, visually making sure and then keeping that vibratory equipment off. Don't, don't hit it so hard that you're shattering it.
So, when we did this, originally did the seal coats in Woodway, there was some vibration equipment that was used that shouldn't have had been used?
Heavily.
Is that what you're saying? Is that in essence what you're saying?
Yes, sir. What we did in Woodway was we put 900 tons of level up, hot mix. We had a lay down machine. We put vibratory equipment. We had belly dumps. They were leveling that road up to make it smooth and ride better. And what that did is it shattered that base. And I'll admit, it wasn't the contractor that decided that was a choice that we made. It was the first time we'd ever put that much level up and that much hot mix in a neighborhood where other times-
Before the seal coat.
Right. Other times, we just seal coat, streets would look the same and they were fine. But it was that level up that really changed the, that condition of that existing base. And that's why we wanted the testing.
There was no testing.
And there was no testing. That's correct.
And we seal coated on top of that after that.
And then we locked that moisture in and it couldn't get out.
Okay.
I'll give it back to Todd.
One, one thing that I want to add too is, you know, there's, and we'll talk about Tanglewood here in a second, but, you know, one of the challenges that we've run into Tanglewood is that, you know, the project, because it's needed reconstruction and it's needed utility replacements, for years, it's, there's been this thought that, well, don't spend any money on it because it might be considered a waste if you're going to then have to reconstruct it and tear up what you just did. But then look where that has us now, right? And so, we want to try and be mindful of that and not be in that type of situation again. And so, if there is an opportunity to seal coat, and it's not going to look perfect, we all know that, if there's, you know, dips, those dips aren't going to go away with a seal coat. But we want to at least preserve the street, help it not get any worse, to buy us the time to get to a planning window when we have the funds to reconstruct it, and at minimum, help alleviate it from getting any worse. And we think that that, you know, $1.7 million or whatever it ends up being is worth buying you that five to seven-year window to then start phasing it in because it's not going to even be something that gets done all at once, right? Because realistically, eventually, when this neighborhood gets reconstructed, it's probably going to be several phases. So, it might be 15 years before one of the streets in this neighborhood gets reconstructed. And so, that $1.7 million expense might be worth it. Could be worth a shot, right? Especially if it's not a strategy we've utilized before. But food for that, and ultimately, that's your decision, right? But that's a potential scope change here.
There, there's not smaller machines that do mill and overlay, but just don't do it as hard or aren't as big for smaller streets, like dollhouse streets. It's just, yeah, that's just the way the industry is.
So, does the, does the 555, the potential cost impact, does that include the additional testing that you're talking about?
No, the, the testing is, is a budgeted item that we, that we budget for every year. And, and we do that based on what streets we know that are coming up the next year. So, we'll, we'll get an S, or get a proposal from, from this engineering company. And based on what those streets are, for example, like in '23, we know what streets are coming up. We'll go ahead and get a proposal based on that, and, and that's not included in this, in this cost, no.
What's, what's another, what's another neighborhood that the residents in Castle Hills West could look at to see what their streets would look like after this would be done?
So, we just seal coated Simron. Help me with the ones on Ben Jordan.
Country Club's been done in within the last few years.
Yep.
Markstone up in the other side. They're going for us all those streets.
Yeah, Riada, those, those streets.
That would give, that would give you a sense of the finished product. But it, keep in mind, it's completely different in terms of we're just the existing state, right? So, seal coating over Castle Hills West, while the physical feel and look of it would be the same, the smoothness of it would not. Because again, you're not reconstructing the street. So, if there's dips here and there, you know, some of those dips aren't going to completely go away with a seal coat. So, it was just appropriate to manage expectations, and that's, our message to the residents would be the same that we're telling you now, which is, this is simply to buy us some time to be able to more appropriately plan reconstruction into the budget.
The finish would be the same.
Right. The finish would be the same in terms of the, the rock and the, and the Black Onyx product that goes on, on top.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, next one.
So, the last, last change that I want to talk to you about is Tanglewood subdivision. You may recall, on August 17th, we came to council with the proposed Phase 1 design that was to include both the streets in blue and the streets in, in orange. That one's definitely not mustard, by the way. That one's orange. But anyway, at that time, you approved, council, council approved the, the full Phase 1 design. And at that time, the CIP, we, we only had the, for the construction portion, we only had what was reflective of the, the orange color. So, we're suggesting now, we want to go ahead and add the streets in blue, the construction portion, the construction aspect of the streets in blue, because that completes the entire design that we did. So, again, additional utilities in '23 would be 2.1 million, and additional streets in '24 would, would be another 2.7 million. On my next slide, I'll show you how that kind of wraps up into a whole, whole picture of, of the total cost. So, again, here's, here are the, this is the recap of the potential impact to those changes that we just discussed. Again, the cost impacts on the left, this is for the remaining planning window. Again, I'll just recap Lone Tree Acres, original budget of 5.8. If we do the additional drainage portion of the project, that's an additional 2.1. And you can see the total cost there. Delmar, remember, we're taking out the fiscal year '23 mill and overlay? So, that's a deduct of $637,000. Dairy Road, if we were to add the 16-inch waterline, that's an additional 1.3 million potential impact. Castle Hills, if we were to do the seal coat, that's, that increases that project to 1.7, almost 1.8 million. And Tanglewood, the additional impact of the construction portion for those utilities and streets that I showed you in blue is an additional 4.8 million. So, just to kind of sum it up, originally in the CIP, we had 16.8 million for these projects. That was the original cost estimate. And you can see there that we are, the potential cost impact or increase is 8.1 million, and then the total cost is 25 million. Added some positive impacts on this slide, just to kind of show you what, when we get into goals, I'll kind of, this will make more sense. But right now, the miles added for the Castle Hills project would give us three additional miles, which therefore, six of those segments were below 40 on the PCI score, right? The goal of raising the overall PCI score. And then Tanglewood was an additional one mile. And surprisingly, none of those streets in Tanglewood were below 40 PCI. Any questions? So, next I want to get into some goals and objectives for the remaining planning window of the CIP. So, obviously, number one, there are streets. The original goal was to always increase our, our overall PCI score of 63. We want, we want to focus on trying to raise that PCI score. Once we get into March, my goal is to, is to, once we have that first draft presentation of the CIP, I want to sort of bring you a, a chart that shows how we're kind of increasing, you know, from where we started when we first initially did the IMS study to where we're at now, once some of these projects get, these proposed projects, you know, get, get added to the CIP. So, again, I believe Mayor Bocknight mentioned in the state of the city that our goal is 112 miles of streets in this current planning window. So, we're striving to meet that goal. And roughly 30% of the worst streets, which equates to minus 40PCI, we want to be able to incorporate 30% of those streets. And, and what I'm, and what I mean by streets, let me, let me clarify, street segments. There are 200, excuse me, there's 203 segments, right? Blocks, we'll say, of, of streets in the City of Victoria right now that is scored below 40. We want to be able to incorporate at least 30% of those into the CIP moving forward. That's, that's a goal. And I'll, I'll go into detail on where we're at on that. Number two, we want to, we want to, we want to incorporate master plan projects into the CIP. That's, that's, that's a given. So, we'll use that master plan guidance to recommend some projects that are, are cost friendly, you know, reasonable in terms of cost and make an immediate impact to the CIP and, and to the city. And then lastly, we'll talk about public safety building. I know Jesus has got a, a presentation on that here shortly, so we'll go, he'll go into more detail on that. I added this slide in here. I think many of y'all have seen this before. This is just a, a map of, of, in, the blue lines are the street projects that we've done over the last five years. These are just kind of facts to be proud of. In the last five-year planning window, we did 75 miles of streets. In this current planning window from '22 to '26, we're currently sitting at 102 miles. So, to go in more detail on our, our street goals, again, I mentioned that we're sitting at 102 miles of streets and a goal of 112. With those changes that I just talked to you about in terms of Castle Hills West, Tanglewood, et cetera, that, that brings our potential, if those, if those projects make it to the CIP, those, that brings our potential to 106 miles of streets in the current planning window with the remaining of six streets to add, six miles of streets to add. Currently, right now, in the CIP, we have, I mentioned those, those segments of below 40PCI. Currently, right now, we have 24% of those, of those street segments, right? There's 203 of them. Right now, we have 49. Our goal's 30. If we add Castle Hills, seal coat, Tanglewood, et cetera, well, I'm sorry, Tanglewood did not have any below, below 40. But if we add those street segments, we now increase our, our total to 27% with the remaining 3% to meet our goal. And that's currently where we stand right now.
Couple comments on that. So, I know you've heard me and Jeff mention it at a state of the city speech too, that our goal would be 25% of the worst streets. We've upped that to 30 internally for planning purposes because we want to make sure that we give ourselves some wiggle room so that when we go through a formalized IMS study again, five years from the date that we did the first one, that we ensure that we tackled one-fourth of the worst streets. And realistically, there'll be some streets that, you know, didn't score below 40 that would score 40 because they just kept getting worse, right? So, we just want some wiggle room associated with that. The other point is that our objective leading up to the, to finalizing a fiscal year '23 version of the CIP doesn't have to be trying to get to the 112 already. Because keep in mind that, you know, leading up to fiscal year '24, we'll have another conversation with you, and there'll be an opportunity to add projects then, right? There'll be another opportunity to add projects leading up to the fiscal year '25 edition of the CIP, right? So, don't feel the pressure to have to get to 112 or to 30, you know, this cycle. I would suggest that we simply focus on trying to move closer to the target and not necessarily try and hit to the 112. But obviously, if council already feels comfortable, especially after we discussed thoroughfares and whatnot, you know, making some of those decisions, well, then, yeah, let's do it. But don't feel like we have to get to the 112 this spring.
So, here are some projects that we're, that we're, that staff recommends to help us meet those goals, right? And again, these projects, we're not suggesting adding these projects, like, like Mr. Garza said, to the 2023 version of the CIP. These are just projects that we're looking at adding to that, that total planning window. Again, so, these projects all have, have something in common. For example, these are all reconstruction projects. They're all open ditch section, no utilities, very reasonable in terms of cost, and they're all below 40PCI score. There's 11 total segments that below, below 40PCI. I just wanted to show kind of the whole map there, just so you can kind of see, we kind of, they're spread out across the, the tent of the city. And I'll just kind of go over some of these projects. Again, Nursery Drive, this project is, is a top priority. I know, I know staff gets plenty of phone calls about Nursery Drive, the portion between Lake Forest out to the city limit sign. I believe about three or four years ago, maybe five years ago, we did, from the, we did, we did reconstruct Nursery from the Loop out to Lake Forest, but we didn't complete the project. And so, this instance completes that entire project. McGruder Drive, between Country Club to Lingo, that's just past Hidden Meadows, towards the back of McGruder there. That project, again, below 40PCI. Carstner, Gossett, Duncan, and Bishop there in blue, those projects, again, similar to McGruder and Nursery, they're, they're reconstruction, open ditch, no utility replacement, and below 40. We've selected Parsful Street to the left on, of the, of the map there in the green, lime green. And then Sartucci, Julius, and Brown in blue, and Mahia Thompson Bennett, Ally Walter on the south side there. Again, total impact for these projects altogether is 4.3 million. This equates to three miles. Again, will, could potentially help us achieve our goals of total miles as well as additional streets below 40. Not, not necessarily proposing what year to put these in, but again, like Mr. Garza said, these, these can be looked at in the remaining planning window.
Just something for you to think about as we try and reach our goals.
Potentially, we could use that savings of the 19 million for some of these streets?
I'm sorry?
Potentially, we could use the savings of the 19 million that we had after we did the pluses and minuses to our CIP list.
Yeah, and we have other debt capacity too, right? So, when we get to Gilbert's presentation, you know, one of the beauties of just where we are with just the situation of our debt is that it puts us in a position unlike the city's been in, in the past, where you've had to do that, right? In order to add a project, you have to delete a project. We're very blessed that over the course of this decade that we're in now, we'll have the opportunity to have a CIP and then also be able to add on to it. And so, don't think that you have to take something off to add these, this 4.3 million. We'd be able to add this 4.3 million without having to reduce anything. That'll become more clear when Gilbert shows some charts.
Okay. I just have a question, I guess, for construction. Because this project- Because these projects are so far spaced out in the city, would we bid them out together or separate?
That's a great question. We would realistically probably bid them out as a bunch.
Okay, so it can be worked in together with the same contractor?
Yeah, if we bid them out together, yeah, for sure.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure so that way.
Assuming that council even, you know, wants us, you know, to tackle these, but yeah. You might have your own priorities that you may want to bring up at some point.
No, I think that if we're going to stick with the less than 50, 40%, I think we can tackle these and, you know, because they're all over the place and you, you're not just concentrating on one, one area. Everybody in the council would get a little bit, and I think that that would be fair. And their districts is what I'm saying, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. And just start working that way. I like the idea of doing it that way.
Can, can you tell us the types of streets? I mean, I know what Nursery is, but some of these streets I'm not as familiar with. Are they residential? Are they, um, more thorough? I don't think they're thoroughfares, but what's, what is the, what's around them?
Yeah, we'd have to really take a deeper dive, you know, into each of those, but it's primarily, there's residential around them.
Okay, so they're similar from that standpoint?
Kind of a mix, right, yeah.
Right.
And I think most of them are open ditch?
Yeah, they all are, yeah. It's intentional. This would be like low hanging fruit reconstruction project because it doesn't necessitate replacing utilities, doesn't necessitate any concrete work. Um, it's literally just.
Right.
Street.
And it is reconstruction?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
They're small streets, that's why.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but oftentimes those are the ones that can be overlooked, right? Because they're just, is, you know, the volume of usage isn't great, but at some point, you know, those streets have to be redone too, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'll introduce the next.
Sure, go ahead.
So, because we won't have a lot of time for this. So part, one of our objectives is to also, um, give you for food for thought, some projects that have come from the various master plans that you've adopted this year. There's obviously dozens of projects that we could probably identify out of these master plans, but to try and, in an effort to make it as easy as possible for you in your review of potential projects, we've narrowed it down to a handful of them in each. Um, and so I'm going to ask the staff that come up to talk about them to literally try and do it within a couple of minutes. So Julie, I would ask you to go straight to your slide, breaking down the thoroughfares. And I would ask council to, um, if you have, you know, pressing questions, ask them. Otherwise, um, let's prioritize absorbing the information so we can, um, get through this presentation. If that's all right. I'm trying to manage time because, you know, yeah, hey, I don't want to get a text from Jeff at 3:30.
So I think our first CIP, um, item needs to be a shorter podium. If I have my say in my vote. So the thoroughfare master plan, um, real quick, it is a little bit harder to kind of, um, just really pick out CIP projects out of the thoroughfare master plan because it's a policy document, it's talking about our system for the future. Um, and so that, that's kind of just taken straight from the first page of kind of explaining what our thoroughfare master plan is. It's a long range planning document.
Just go to the list.
Okay, so we looked at, at intersections and two and three on this, um, presentation is really what comes down to the list. Um, for North Street, the section of Rio Grande from, um, Navarro to Main Street is, uh, projected to have a failing level of service, very heavy congestion. So in a way to combat that, um, North Street could be looked at as an alternative corridor. North Street could also be looked at as, um, a primary entrance into downtown as its connection to Highway 59. Um, and so if you're going to take a project out of the thoroughfare master plan, um, we would recommend North Street reconstruction. Um, and we've broken it down into four phases. Phase two has, um, that price tag includes some utility work, and that's why that's so high. Um, but the Moody to Navarro section is really the section that would, um, could potentially be used as an alternative corridor to improve that level of service on Rio Grande, Houston Highway Business 59. The second, um, project that you could take out at the thoroughfare master plan is, um, the Navarro Street corridor, um, between, uh, Sam Houston and Guy Grant also has a, a low level, projected low level of service, um, which means a low level of service is traffic is just too much. Uh, and then Sam Houston is already at a failing level of service. And so the reconstruction of Guy Grant and then the extension of Guy Grant Town to Ben Jordan, both of those, um, could be alternate routes and have a ripple effect on the Navarro Street corridor and, um, Sam Houston. A big reason Sam Houston has such high traffic and level of ser, failing level of services because of all the schools. And so that connection, um, with Guy Grant running through Leary Lane, of course, could directly improve, um, that traffic circulation in that area. Um, but as you know, that also has a really high price tag. So rebuilding the existing Guy Grant that, um, from Salem to Mockingbird is about, um, 11 million dollars. And then the extension from Mockingbird to Ben Jordan is another 9 million dollars. So the two most impactful projects out of the thoroughfare master plan are also, I think, two of the most expensive projects, um, in the potential CIP list. And there's a visual of the Guy Grant extension. So with that, I'm turning it over to Downtown, Danielle.
So a couple of thoughts on that. Can you go back to, um, where you had the five? So in terms of, of direction from council, we obviously, or the city, has, um, obviously undertaken a corridor project, right, in phases, right? So it was Red River, then it's Crestwood, right? We're wrapping up Crestwood. And so we need to decide on what is that next thoroughfare that we're going to tackle so we can start incorporating the design aspects of it. We could start trying to break it down by phases, you know, all of that. There, depending on how you prioritize wanting to spend the debt capacity that's available, one could argue that, you know, there might be a way to do two thoroughfare projects, um, instead of just one next. Um, but that would be a decision that you'd have to make, you know, once you review everything that we have, uh, needed to be done. But just keep that in mind because that, that's the type of direction that we're going to need from council, um, in March, is which thoroughfare project do we tackle next? So. It's.
It's a big decision.
It is a big decision. And keep in mind that we even earlier insinuated maybe even adding Delmar just because of its condition. And I know that Ben Wilson has also been, um, brought up as well. So there could be other thoroughfares that you want to have conversations about too, but that's the type of direction that we need on the thoroughfare topic.
Is there a possibility of taking that, uh, slide and turning it into a map? Like, we've been looking at maps and seeing, and now I'm trying to picture words.
Showing the options, all in one map? Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you, Julie. So, let's just get to the good stuff.
All right. Okay, so what I have here are four different projects. The North Gate signage project at Main and Rio Grande, Wayfinding signage on the secondary corridors, Deleon Plaza expansion and Main Street Streetscape's sidewalk project. So this gives the visual again of the North Gateway signage. When I talk about this, it's the, the actual signage and the public art and the landscaping. And we're looking at about $550,000 for that project. Um, acquisition or leasing of land may be necessary, so that will need to be in consideration later down the road. Wayfinding signage, these are some examples of the wayfinding signage that you can see on the secondary corridors, um, to help travelers get to downtown. That project is roughly $200,000. There's seven locations. These intersections are on the major thoroughfares such as Moody Street and Navarro Street and, um, the, the roads that coincide with those to get you to downtown. And it would also look and feel similar to the North Gateway signage. You want the same branding throughout and look and feel. Um, each gateway would be instrumental, again, for directing traffic to downtown. Then we have the Deleon Plaza expansion. That is roughly a 1.8 million dollar project. Uh, we would look to start and complete the design in spring, this, this coming spring. And then, um, the scope would include public restroom, brick pavers, water feature, closing the street at Forest, um, concrete stage, lighting, picnic tables and a small playground structure.
On that one, what do you, on Forest, do you anticipate just, uh, removable bollards?
There are a couple of different options. You can do removable. There are also the ones that are a little bit more expensive that you push a button and they go down to the concrete. Um, but there are different options that we looked at. Um, actually, I had a meeting with Freezer Nichols to kind of discuss the scope and that was one of the topics we talked about.
And in that 1.8 with that, I mean, I don't want to get into too, too many of the details, I guess. You're going to raise the road and all that type of stuff?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And really quickly on, on that specific project, um, if council is in favor of that project, we would actually suggest, um, getting direction on that project sooner rather than later because if, if this is a project that we're going to do, it makes sense to try and have it completed before our 200th anniversary in 2024. And so we would want to somewhat expedite, um, the design of this project. And so if council is favorable to this project, we would, um, actually enter into a design contract with Freezer Nichols this fiscal year and then plug in the actual construction fiscal year 23. So in this specific one, there is somewhat of a time sensitivity component to it.
And what funds could be used for it?
I'm sorry?
What funds could be used for it?
Um, well, that was a great conversation. Um, we would, we would more than likely, um, just put it into our COs.
Could it also be hot funds? Tourism?
Um, yes, it could be hot funds, yes. It could also be VSTDC.
I'm still.
We, we, we would, um, once we have a good, a good idea of all of the projects that council wants to do, I would ask that you then allow us to be the ones to figure out where it makes more sense to get the funds from, taking into account the big picture of the projects that need to get done.
I know these pictures look great, but I'm still having difficulty with, um, closing that street permanently. Uh, I like some of the flexible alternatives that there are for, um, it being able to be closed at times, but also be functional. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I just continue to have problems with just.
I might mention also as part of the scope for the design, uh, we're, we are recommending that we do a parking study to help with some of that.
And part of the design process would be obviously having conversations with stakeholders, including you, council, um, to get some consensus. This, this, like other projects, you know, are probably going to be projects that, you know, everybody loves. But we, we'll cross that bridge when we, when we get to that.
And the last one, this is the one that we recently just applied for the EDA grant and that is the Main Street Streetscape Sidewalk Project. And it's, uh, approximately $5 million. We look to replace the existing sidewalks in addition to, uh, the streetscapes, the bowl bouts, street, on-street parking, decorative streetlights, decorative crosswalks, trees, grass and irrigation. Um, like I mentioned before, that would come with a 1.25 million dollar, um, match from the city if awarded the grant. And if the grant is awarded, then this would essentially change up my priority list a little. Um, and then if the project is not successful in receiving the EDA grant, then we would look to change the priority of all the projects to include just a section from Rio Grande down to the library at Commercial Street, which is a little over 1.5 million dollars, roughly, 1.2 to 1.5. Well, that's it, any questions? Thank you.
Clap, clapping, yeah. All right, you got 60 seconds, Jason.
Oh, man, um, so here are the five. Any questions?
Great job, thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely. All right, um, so yeah.
But seriously, two minute.
Same, same thing, Martin Luther King Park, Ethel Lee Tracy Park enhancements, uh, gateway signage, new boat ramp, kayak launch for Riverside Park and then ball field turf improvements for, uh, sports tourism. Uh, Martin Luther King, actually looking at completing the whole entire park. The estimates came out at 1.2 million. Again, the whole complete, uh, park that half had been talking about. So looking at that as a project. Ethel Lee Tracy Park, um, some of the things, it was a $3 million project overall from the concept, but what we wanted to do is look at some of the main things. So, uh, a little over a million dollars to actually create that loop system or that, that, uh, the roadway throughout Ethel Lee Tracy. And then because of the fact that we have that and, um, and the crossing of the restroom and the splash pad, we wanted to put the, the restroom right next to the splash pad of where it's at. So that's the reason why we added that, that second component in there to total 1.3. Park gateway signs, um, this is kind of a mix of all over, but what we're really looking at are the gateway signs, uh, for Riverside entrances, all four of those, as well as two over at Ethel Lee Tracy Park and then one over at Ted B. Reed Park. Uh, gateway signs are about 50,000 and some change. Uh, Riverside Park boat ramp and the kayak takeout. Again, this was something that was put into the Parks Master Plan. 1.1 million dollars, looking at, uh, really moving that kayak, uh, takeout because of the location where the pump house is at. It makes for a really difficult time, is, is same thing with the incline. And so again, another sports tourism piece, we really need to focus on the river aspect of it. And, um, so that's the reason why we put this in here as well. And then last but not least, we, uh, ball field turf improvements, again, with, uh, thinking of the sports tourism component of it. Um, we're really wanting to, to, um, increase our tourism opportunities. And one of the ways that we can do that fairly easily is by creating some of our championship fields, converting those from regular turf into, uh, artificial turf. It just allows for better drainage and quicker turnaround when it comes to tournaments. And so what we would be requesting is, uh, two over at the U Sports Complex and then one over at the Adult Sports Complex. Those are about a 10-year lifespan. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the kayak takeout, um, looking at the picture, it looks like it's pretty stationary. Would it actually be floating and be able to move?
Yes, ma'am. We, we, uh, in, in talking with them, we've talked about the rise of the river and how that would be incorporated into this project.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Not sure I trust Ken will take two minutes.
If you'll notice, everybody's getting faster and faster. So here we go. This is, we talked about this the other night. Uh, this is just recap of the master drainage plan and our, our recommendations and where we're moving forward. Our top projects is, this one is one of the undeveloped property locations, but this is critical. If you'll notice, we're diverting some of that water. That green line is taking it to Longtree Creek. We call it the Bueller Diversion. And where that water is going now is going down Regency Ditch, which is behind Country Lane Townhomes and then goes through the neighborhood underground. It's a, it's a lot of maintenance issues with that small ditch. We want to divert some of that water and get it into the Longtree Creek, 280,000. Our next priority is improve the flow and capacity of the major outfalls. This is what they recommended in the master drainage plan. It's to clean and reshape earth, the earthen channels. They've identified the ones that are, that are needing immediate and some, some critical care, critical cleaning. And then other, the other, uh, item under the major outfalls is to repair identified erosion spots where we've got some erosion in the channel that may be causing structural issues or near structural issues. Total cost for, for this priority is 1.5 million. The next one is repair existing concrete line channels. And these would be concrete line channels that are failing, such as in front of the mall or here at Jim Branch Outfall. We've got some concrete that is undermined, it's broken, it's causing us maintenance issues. Estimated cost of 1.3 million. The other one, this one is what Jesus and Todd were talking about. Just to let you know, by doing this outfall or alignment, the other alignment would go behind the, we call Longtree Acres South and it would pick up 144 acres of right now currently undeveloped land. So this project is the start of it. Then we'd come in with another phase later, uh, to pick up that rest of it. But this gets the major alignment that we were talking about. Cost of 2.13. And the last one, this is the big one. This is the Red River Drainage. And if you'll notice, it's going to include a box culvert going down Red River and then across Sam Houston, across Highway 15, Business 59. and then across Sam Houston, across Highway Business 59, and down Delmar. That's the section that we talked about on Delmar is, it's a major project, it's gonna involve digging up a good part of Delmar Drive to put this in. The further it goes, it goes down the railroad ditch and then it hits Longtree Creek. The big issue that I think is on this project, and the cost is so much, is we've got to lower that, what we call the hydraulic grade line or elevation of Longtree Creek. When it floods, that creek is almost at the bottom of the bridge. In July, it was there. And when, at the bridge of Business 59. So what we need to do is lower that elevation so that that water out of Ben Wilson and Red River can drain out. Because it wouldn't drain until that elevation is lowered. That's why I showed this improvement all the way down to Highway 59. What I would recommend, if we want to move forward or look at it more in depth, hire an engineer, do a pre-engineering study. That way, we identify what we need to do. Do, how far do we need to go down Longtree Creek? And at what elevation can we drop that hydraulic grade line? But I'm estimating right now, based on the master drainage plan update, a 23.75 million.
Is that a portion of Longtree Creek in Drainage District 3?
Yes, yes, it is.
Well, okay, we can talk about that later.
Yep, great point. Alright, so that ends this topic. I'd recommend a break.
Okay, we'll take a 15-second break.
We can keep going if you want, up to you.
I have five minutes.
Okay.
So 2:58, 2:59, be back. Just stretch your legs.
Okay, Jeff, you're good if I get started? Yes, okey-dokey. Alright, so just to finish Todd's portion of it, we obviously left you with some reading material, take that with you. We forgot to reference that there's also a cheat sheet that highlights all of the streets that are included in the various residential programs, just as a refresher. So take that with you as well. Alright, so next topic, Public Safety Headquarters Update. My goal is to go through this in 10, 15 minutes. Then Gilbert, go through debt capacity in 25 to 30. And then Thomas, wrap us up with 15 minutes of redistricting items. So, I'm sorry, city charter. Alright, so really quickly, I know this is new to some of you, but as a refresher, our public safety facilities are, quite frankly, inadequate from a staffing perspective. Some of them can be considered unsafe because of missing some critical life safety aspects, such as fire suppression systems. Currently, you'll see in a map here that operations are decentralized and the facilities are dated. You may also recall that back in 2017, the city undertook a process to go through public safety facility assessment, and I'll share with you a little bit of that and where we are now. This map shows you all of the different facilities that were included in the study and where they are located across our community. And as you can tell, they're all over the place. And so one of the objectives of the original study was to try and centralize these as much as possible. In 2018, that recommendation yielded a two-phase approach, and this was the site. So the site itself was roughly 13, 14 acres with 10 to 11 being developed, something to that extent. At the time, Phase 1 was identified as being an indoor gun range. That was estimated at 9.6 million. Phase 2 were all the other buildings, which included training, storage, and the headquarters building itself, which was at the time was around 62,000 square feet. Total cost, 53.5 million. The only thing that came out of this recommendation was when the city acquired the 25 acres off of Ben Jordan, which we've sold off 10 to Enchanted Gardens and are in the process of selling the balance. So where we are now, of course, is wanting to update that study with some new objectives. One of the objectives is to, of course, update the spatial analysis and the space needs assessment. Part of this exercise, just so you know, includes the architect talking to the chiefs, asking them, how do you envision your growth over the course of the next 20 years? And trying to identify how much space will be needed at the time. So pretty straightforward, but can be pretty complex because it obviously forces the chief to make some major assumptions as to how the department's gonna grow over the course of the next 20 years, but it's a good exercise nonetheless. The 2021 study also considered some additional alternatives, other than simply centralizing everything. There was some basic preliminary assessment of the existing space, which was somewhat missing from the study in 2018. And the part that was really missing from the 2018 study was what do you do with the space when PD moves out? In my opinion, it's somewhat of a waste of taxpayer dollars when you have a publicly-owned building that's unoccupied and just sits there, right, without a plan? And so it really just didn't sit well with me when that 2018 study just didn't have a really good sense of that. And so because of that, in this 2021 version, we included in that same spatial analysis that I referenced earlier, where you outlook for 20 years, we included the existing departments that have a footprint in what I'm referring to as the City Hall Complex, which is Municipal Court, City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office, and City Secretary's Office. So I'm gonna go briefly, the study itself is not in its final form, so I'm kind of just giving you an update of where we are and some preliminary information. My hope was for the final study and be able to give you a booklet and have the architect here today, but we just weren't able to get to that. In any case, what we realized through this exercise was that not all of the operations need to be consolidated into one site. Meaning, you may recall, the gun range was on the site, storage was on that site, training was on the site. The updated study suggests that all that doesn't need to be on the same site. And in retrospect, there might be some opportunities to leverage other opportunities. So for example, training, we currently have a really awesome drill site for the fire department off of Ben Jordan. And so why not focus on a more robust training site for public safety in general on that site, since there's plenty of land there already, and sort of focus that in that area? We also realized that from a gun range standpoint, you know, there's alternatives other than having a $10 million indoor range. But in any case, we realized that through the study. We also looked at some options that included renovating buildings downtown. And so some of that will be included in the final study. We also looked at having central headquarters downtown and having police substation on the north side of town or just somewhere else that's not downtown. And so there'll be some of that information in terms of how we looked at those options in the final study. But ultimately, the centralized headquarters is the preferred option and made the most sense, even after we went through those different scenarios. One of the big changes is the potential inclusion of Municipal Court. As we went through those individual spatial analysis conversations with each of those departments, we quickly realized that Municipal Court is severely under, what's the word, underspaced. They don't have adequate space now to really do what they need to do effectively. It's, we realized in that process and meeting with Tiffany and the judge that we're just amazed at how they're able to do what they do in that tight of a space. But in any case, so one of the ideas was, well, let's include Municipal Court as part of the centralized Public Safety Headquarters Building. And that way, they have an opportunity to design their space to meet their needs. They have an opportunity to design Municipal Court Chamber that's more consistent with the needs that they have when they host, you know, trials, whatever it is that they do. I worded that oddly. That's not what I meant, just trying to be quick, but you know what I mean? So, and then it also presented some opportunities for remodeling of the existing City Hall Complex, and I'll share some of those concepts with you shortly. But in terms of the updated centralized concept, it's much smaller than previously in terms of the site, not so much the building, but the site. And so this site only necessitates eight acres. The building itself is slightly bigger because of the incorporation of Municipal Court. So the building itself would be roughly 69,000 square feet. And you'll see that on the cost aspect of it, we have construction costs ranging from 25 to 30 million and some soft costs, which would include the architectural work at around roughly 3 million. We intentionally separated this because obviously some of the soft costs, we wouldn't want to try and issue any debt for. You know, we would have to kind of think about how we want to fund the soft cost as opposed to potentially issuing debt for that. Obviously, issuing debt for the construction aspect of it would be recommended and would be common. But this is what that would look like. It's kind of hard to read, but you would have a dedicated entrance for Municipal Court with plenty of parking, which is one of the biggest issues that our current site has, not only for Municipal Court but for PD in general. And another entrance for public safety, there's a gate, a secure gate back here. And so you could see all of the parking that would exist behind the secure gate for staff as well as for police vehicles. So what about City Hall Complex, the basement? This gives you just a sense of what the, of potentially how much space is available. And so this shows public versus secure space. One of the consistent things that you'll see across the next few slides is the color coding aspect of this. And so in this instance, yellow would be considered shared public space. The lighter color, I get, the lighter yellow, if you will, would be shared space for staff, like staff bathrooms. And then the beige, now the tan color, would be just office space. And so you'll see that in this basement area, there's a potential to have 11,000 square feet of office space built out. There would be some demolition, obviously, incorporated into that. Currently, you may recall that on the basement level, there's actually, whoops, there's actually a driveway where you can drive vehicles into the basement here. That driveway, as you can imagine, is not ADA compliant. And so the recommendation would be to just convert that angled entrance into the, an external staircase to enter the basement. And some aspects of the basement aren't even currently even air-conditioned because of what their original purpose was. So there's a lot of work that would need to get done in the basement, but this is just to give you a sense of that. The final report would estimate that we wouldn't get to any construction of City Hall Complex until we complete the Public Safety Headquarters Building first. And so these costs are already taken into account, an annual increase of 6% inflation until we would get to five, six, seven years from now. Hence why the cost is three to five, and if that seems high to you, that's because that's already taken into account, potentially doing this work five years from now, six years from now, seven years from now. On the first floor, you'll notice, same color code approach. You'll notice that this would present an opportunity to widen council chambers slightly, to increase capacity slightly. Now that this wouldn't double as Municipal Court, it would present an opportunity to design it in a way that is fully conducive to city council meetings and potentially even some multipurpose usage for the city in general. You notice that there is an intentional aspect to the public versus secure space. This has become very common in the world of municipal facility design because of situations like active shooter and so many other things that unfortunately people might have to deal with. And so now it's becoming very common to have very clear distinction between public space, staff space. Staff space have their own bathrooms so that they never have to access the public space, things of that sort. You'll notice that City Secretary's Office has been expanded, which is in the bottom, to almost take up that entire side of the building as they grow over the next 20 years. And up here is simply just vacant space that could be utilized for another department. Eventually, when we go through the facility assessment study for all the other departments, that would be the time when we would be able to figure out, okay, well, how many square footage will PIO need in 20 years? Okay, if it's 11,000 square feet, then we plug them in, as an example. And second floor really just takes a completely different approach to the City Attorney's Office and the City Manager's Office. This isn't the final layout, so if Thomas looks at it and says, ah, my office isn't supposed to be in that corner, it's not. But this is simply to give you an idea of a new approach that would have the City Manager's Office and the City Attorney's Office working more closely together, not divided by a hallway. And this would present an opportunity to have centralized support services from staff to everything else. So where we are with it is we want to finalize this fiscal year, of course, the study, get it into a document that has all of the backup information. I did get a chance to email you some of that backup information, but we'll share more of that over the course of the next few months. But our idea is that in this fiscal year, we try and figure out where we would place this facility. We obviously have a different need now that we know that it would take up eight acres for a centralized Public Safety Headquarters facility. So I would say that our priority this fiscal year is trying to finalize where that would be. And I know that we've had some conversations around that already. Our recommendation would be that if city council does choose to prioritize the Public Safety Headquarters facility, that we look into incorporating the design aspect of it into fiscal year 23, which we could qualify as being the soft cost, as an example. And then looking to incorporate the construction cost in fiscal year 24. Or at whichever point council feels comfortable doing so after you get a feel for the debt capacity aspect of it. But that would be our recommendation so that we can kind of keep everything going. And then, as I alluded to earlier, once folks move out of City Hall Complex, then that would be the time to start staggering in and facing in renovations for City Hall Complex. This, as you can imagine, would have a ripple effect because as departments move into City Hall, it creates opportunities at 700 Main for departments that would stay at 700 Main to potentially go through a remodel of 700 Main after that for their needs. And so you may recall, early on in this process, me sharing with you that the city has been blessed over the course of the last 20, 25 years to have 700 Main. Because as the city has grown, the city has had 700 Main to move departments from City Hall to 700 Main, renovations at City Hall, renovations at 700 Main. But if we look towards the next 20 or 25 years, we don't have another 700 Main that we can just look to and say, just move them over there. At this point, it's gonna necessitate a more intentional game plan for us to account for that growth that the city will have, and specifically the Police Department will have over the course of the next 20 or 25 years. So that's where we are with it, and I primarily wanted to provide you an update and talk about it in this setting. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Okay, cool. Just like all the other projects, this is another project on the list for you to consider, plugging into the CIP. So no pressure, but you have a lot to think about, and I look forward to this conversation specifically over the course of the next few months. And now, I'll turn it over to Gilbert, because I'm sure everybody's wondering, that's a lot of stuff going on, how are we gonna pay for it? And Gilbert's about to tell you how.
Nothing.
He's about to tell you how.
Alright, 20 minutes, right?
20 minutes.
Hey, you get to have this one. Come on, click it off. There you go.
You want me to sing or something?
No. James, I'm using this, right? Okay. 20 minutes. It took me longer to put this thing together than 20 minutes, so bear with me. Is there a certain spot I cannot cross here? Right? I say right here?
I don't know.
I can go anywhere? Well, I like y'all guys. Okay.
Don't get too close to him.
Just FYI, 20 minutes is a short time. Boy, I know you guys liked it. I know, I welcome you any given time to come by the office. I know Jan Scott always comes by, and I love to visit and talk. Mark, you know that. And we sit down one-on-one, so we go through it a little slower. And I don't expect this to grasp everything right away, but you know, I think Mr. Garage, we acknowledged that. Just come by, we'll sit down, we go through it, and I'll hit by lunch, we're good. Okay? Alright, let me go through, real quick, some of the highlight objectives. Okay, first of all and foremost, this is not a Dave Ramsey seminar. Okay, I want to carry that out. I mean, it's great, we're in a great situation where our debt is declining, and I don't want to get to a point or walk away from this situation that we have zero debt forever in our life. That's not gonna happen. Why? City our size, or even bigger, rely on debt as a financial tool. We have to. You saw some of these numbers. We don't have that in cash. So debt is a proper way of funding these items. But the kick here is how you manage that debt. How do you issue it? The timing and when? Because you gotta think about some things, council. How much do you want to issue one time? That you might try, you want to vote these items or not vote them, so you want to keep them spread out? So those are the things you still gotta think about, okay? And I'll go through it real quick. Now, we want to identify some resources. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, a lot of this stuff is FYI. I plan to come back later. Again, we can always visit individually. We're gonna talk about, real quick, debt capacity update and some changes. No financial decision. While I go, I think Mark or somebody was asking, well, how are we gonna pay for that? Don't worry about that. Don't worry about that. Don't even worry about that. Let us worry about that. And we can come back with a plan in March, and then you can worry about it then. Okay? We're good. Last thing, keep in mind, I was here last year and telling you, this thing is going to change until you start maturing. Maybe at the third or fourth year, it's be easy for y'all because now you can deal with these big numbers and how it's going to lay out. Folks, we had a prime time in our life right now. 10 years ago, we were waiting to get to 23, 24, we had all these debt capacity. We're around the corner, folks. Now some serious decisions have to be happening. It doesn't say that we got to spend all the money right away. It's just saying, it's a good problem because you have solutions to it, you have the money, but when? The timing and everything else, lay it out. Okay? Just take that in mind. We're not saying don't issue debt, but you want to manage it right. Okay? Oh, I forgot, I keep presenting this. I brought my little mouse from my cat deal. It's much better than what you bought. $2, perfect. All right, let's go into the funding sources real quick. You know, I have gone through this last time, transfers from the operation. We still want to be in compliance with our policy, that's a given. We want to have a balanced budget and when we conservative and flexible in these funds. Sometimes I might bring too much, I got to bring it back because that happened last time. Victoria Sales Sack Development Corporation. Big takeaway, I like to have one month, one year reserve in there, which is, equates to the expenditures. Also, at a given year, I like to have about $8 million ability to have incentives. Okay? So in a given year, you have the capability to issue, I mean, to, to spend $8 million without affecting your CIP. Does that make sense? I want to make sure that those goals are there. Grants, we're going to have federal grants. Keep in mind, when we're talking about grants while ago, by March, you might see some grants in there that have not been approved, but I might have done some matching allocation. So we go forward and the future, if they're approved, great. If they're not approved, we got to reshuffle and revisit like we're doing right now. Make sense? Uh, hotel tax, same thing there. Use on sports facility, historical district tourism. Revenue bond. Want to maximize the debt capacity, which I go through a little more in a minute. Uh, you pledge revenue here, there's not a tax rate that you sit, uh, place allowed. And it's, uh, it's not voted, if you don't want to vote it, which I suggest not. And utility funds, the GL and CO bonds. Again, you want to maximize your debt capacity. You want to leverage your tax, which is, you pledge a debt tax rate to that. It's voted or not voted, depends on counsel, how you want to deal with it, especially on the amount. And of course, we've got a new twist to it. We've got this House bill that tells you how and where, what type of structure you can use COs target. But we, we're fine. All right. Now we're going to, I got Dusty, he's not the Dave Ramsey guy, kind of looks at him, but he's just going to give you a highlight of the market, okay? Just give a little taste.
Sounds good, very good. Y'all are really brave, just passing a microphone off to me on a Friday afternoon. There's a lot of people that would recommend against that, but, uh, anyway, I will be really quick as it relates to the, to the bond market. It almost feels like a broken record of when we were in this room about this time last year. Uh, some of the highlights though, uh, to think about right now, uh, the infrastructure bill passed here recently. However, we use a number like one, one trillion dollar infrastructure bill that passed. Um, that's really chopped by more than a third, by more than two-thirds of what they were really hoping for. In terms of the bond market and interest rates, that has been a positive thing. There was some thought that the infrastructure bill was going to really, really rev up, uh, the engines in terms of municipal bond issuance. Greater municipal bond issuance means more opportunity for investors to be choosy about how they invest their money, sending interest rates higher with the passage of a $1 trillion plan. Interest rates actually came back down slightly in our favor. So that's good. You know, this is a little GDP graph. Obviously, we're still in a fairly flat GDP cycle right now, just trying to effectively wake up from COVID. Uh, that's helping to keep interest rates low. Now, we are looking next week, next week, the Fed's going to meet. And there was some talk that the Fed may go ahead and introduce its first rate hike at that meeting, uh, next Wednesday, uh, with this new, kind of the Omicron variant that's out and some of the uncertainty that seems to be out there related to, to Omicron. They're thinking that, uh, interest rates will likely, the Fed's plan on interest rates will likely, uh, continue as it is with likely expectation for rate hikes to begin sometime in 2022. So all that being said, in terms of your ability to go out and, if you need to go out and finance projects through the issuance of municipal bonds, we are still in a very, very low interest rate environment. And I expect that interest rate environment, uh, to remain very favorable over the next year or so, assuming that the Fed does the job that they're supposed to do to keep inflation in check. If they don't do their job and keep inflation in check, we will see higher interest rates.
That's it?
That's it.
You want a disclaimer?
I don't want to read that.
Okay. Thank you, Dusty.
You got it. I'm going to put this here.
Hit, hit that deal for me. Takeaway here, I'm not going to go through all this is that debt capacity, as you know, it's a function of your economic base that allows you to have some debt capacity. However, there's a flip side of that. I always say this, two sides of the coins. You can have all the debt capacity you want, but you also consider the affordability of it. In other words, you've got a taxpayer and you have all these governmental agencies out there competing for that taxpayer's money. Does that make sense to y'all? I'm not saying you cannot sell debt. It's just some of the variables you got to consider when you go and sell debt. That's all it is to it, okay? Oh, that's it?
Is that good?
Was that it? Okay, great. Let's go to utilities. Oh, influence factors. Yeah, you didn't hear it. One more. Oh, Nita, get aware.
All right, see, I knew I shouldn't drive that thing.
Okay, put the cursor there.
I hear you. All right.
Okay. Stop it. All right. Real quick, takeaway here, debt capacity. Think about, it's a credit card. Think about your personal credit cards. You manage your personal credit card like you, you know, that you know how much credit line you have, but you want to manage it because you don't want to spend all that credit card up right now. You might have some cash, you want to pay cash, you don't want to use your credit. I'm not saying the city should not use a debt, just that, same logic. Just manage it, your debt. Why? Because it's influence factors on any given year. It will happen every year, guarantee you that, counsel. Next year, you're going to have a different factors influencing it. For example, your praise value, we just went up 8.7 million dollars and percentage-wise. When I came to you last year, we used a 1.6%. And I'll show you the effect of that in a minute. The same thing can happen if the tax praise values go down, that will have an impact on your debt capacity. By the way, the red is negative, kind of. Black is good. Your outstanding debt balance is another influence it. If this goes down, you get more debt capacity. Goes up, it's less based upon your base, tax base. Tax rate depends how, over the years, we've had a policy, kind of maintain it real stable. So you have that cash to use it on new debt. I'll get that in a minute. I'll go in and further. Same thing would happen utility, uh, or utility revenue bonds. We're using that cash from the utility side to fund some of these programs. Okay? All these items can influence your debt capacity. Okay? That's the takeaway. Hit it, sir. Utilities. I brought them all the way from San Antonio just to drive this. Easy. All right, real quick, takeaway here. Yeah, let's go there.
All right.
Keep in mind, when I was here last time, it's dropping, has a hot potato. What this represents, okay, you went too quick, I won't fire you.
Right here.
Right there. That's your debt service for utility revenue bonds. Over the next, I don't know, 12, 13 years, we can go from $36 million to zero. It's going to drop, as you see it, real fast. What that means, it creates a lot of flexibility for you at no rush when you want to sell bonds. And strategically, find what year you want to use it. You have a lot of cash, you hit it, hit next.
Not only is the, not only is the principal amount going to, going to, going to fall, but it's obviously the annual payment amount.
Right. Go back. For example, here, right now, we're generating about $9 million in cash flow for the debt side. I have not dropped anything off on the utility rates. Remember, we haven't dropped the rates. On the next line here is your debt service that's going to be dropping over the years. So over the years, you have excess cash flow. By 12 years, you have $8 million. The takeaway here, how we manage that? How we start using that debt? As I recall, last year, I mentioned, well, let's use something that we use as cash. If you don't need to sell debt, let's use it on CIP there for one-time use. So we have that cash for next year, whenever we need it. Does that make sense? Hit it.
Hit it.
There you go. This is where we left off December last year. This is when I first started. And December 20, I said, counsel, this is what we have right now. We have $102 million debt capacity. If we go and use all this cash flow, this is what you can sell in a given year. Okay? Does that make sense to y'all? But, hit the next one. We came back, we came back, no, you went too fast. August, there you. We came back in August and said, counsel, the CIP, after y'all went through it and said, okay, we want to do this project and this is how it's going to lay out. There was a decision made, we're going to do about $6 million in revenue bond. As I recall, that goes towards the design, utilities and everything else. Y'all recall? Yep. Y'all, next week, y'all going to be approving some engineering. And then also in '23, we're going to come back and sell another $10 million to do the construction. Remember this? This is where we left off in August. So we decided to take up about $16 million. That means we still have in our credit card about $86 million. Make sense? Okay. Next line. So here, I'm.
Went too fast again, Dusty. Well, it's, go ahead. There you go.
So here we are today. In '22, we planned to sell the $6 million. That's going to take away $460,000 in cash flow. That's coming off the bottom. So I've got 460 coming off, now I've got $740,000 in cash flow remaining years. Now I've got still $86.6 million. And '23, so far, as of today, maybe March should be higher, we're planning to sell another $10 million. And this is what it looks like right now. In '23, we have $29.6 million. We've got $9 million on the sideline to be sold and this still available to be moved around here and here. There's no cash. If you sell this debt here, you don't have nothing here. But if we don't need this, we can be moving it across and use it on one-time money, one-time project. Make sense? Throw those slides, let me show you comparison.
Back to '21, August or?
No, no, uh, go forward. Okay. Here's August in '21, and here's, we are right now. We left off in August, we had $21.42 left over. I'm moving this over to '23, which now is 29.06. You see that? I haven't used it, I still got it. The question for us now, what are we coming up with CIPs? Let me talk about that real quick. It's, I think it's very important. Forget the money side. It's coming from me, you believe that? Counsel, you're running the show. Staff is here to provide information. We do the CIP, we make suggestions, but ultimately, it's your CIP for the vision of Victoria. Does that make sense? As a result of that, you are dictating how that funding sources are to occur, i.e., when to sell debt. So when you see up here or in the presentation, let the CIP drive the debt capacity, that's what I meant. Let counsel drive the projects, which in turn would drive your debt. I'm not telling you, don't sell debt. Just take your time, study it, issue when you need to issue. Make sense? Good.
And Gilbert, one, one point to this. So in fiscal year '23, let's say we don't add anything to the utility side and we stick to the 10, but there's 29 available, then this time next year, you would see the difference continue shifting over to the right because it would still stay, it would still stay blue, they would still be available. So that's how this would work.
So in '24, you have over $50 million. So it just keeps on doing, until you decide when to use it and how to use it. Okay?
And the same is true then, of course, for '25 and '26.
It just keeps going until we tap into it.
Um, yes, to qualify, in order this to be effective, two foes. One, maybe our, our, uh, customer baseline increases. Guess what? You got more cash flow. Or the opposite can happen. If our goes down, you got less cash flow. Just make sure you understand that. Next slide.
Mark? I've got a question.
Okay, just don't count to my 20 minutes.
Can utility, revenue bonds only be used for certain specific, like, could they be used for drainage, for example?
Good question. Can I, and I think, and we can go back to last year's tape if you want to look at it, because that question came up to you then. We, one of the strategies with this, what I'm proposing is that we want to look at our utility funds first. What are their needs? Let's take care of those needs. If we still have debt capacity available, and I suggested this, let's use that cash where it needs to go for CIP. It can be, because I got new different streets, I can go somewhere else. I do not want to use it if it's a recurrent on something else because I need it back on utility following year. Because remember this, well, I'm not going to muddy the water, he's probably giving me the eye, but we still got to look at drainage fee possibly down the road. How are we going to deal with some of these new projects that's still not even being addressed right now? Okay? So I want to get all that cleared up. So I don't want to use all that utility money right away and just hold it off. So it needs to mesh all together. Don't feel like you're in a rush, that's my whole point.
The short answer is yes. And historically, the city has used both COs and revenue bonds for drainage projects. It just would depend on the project and, and whatnot.
Well, I don't mean to correct you. City manager, we have never used any revenue bonds before on, on any type of streets.
I didn't say streets.
Okay.
I said drainage.
Okay. Stand corrected.
What if I said streets, I'm sorry too.
All right, let's go to GL. So first of all, any question, recently I broke out revenue bond because that's pretty straightforward because you don't have that cash there all the time because it's on a utility rate. Now, GL, CO, you're dealing with a tax rate, same philosophy, but you're dealing with the tax rate now each year.
Take, real quick, takeaway on the utility side, right, is there's debt capacity. So any project that we've proposed that would take up utility debt capacity, it's there. And if there are other projects that council wants to consider that would come from the utility side, the capacity is there, as you just saw. That's the big takeaway.
Uh, I'm going to the GL, CO side. Takeaway here is that, I know I've said this so many times, like, try to maximize your debt capacity. What, what do you mean by that, Gil? If we have cash, let's use cash and hold off to your debt when you need to use it. Basically, it's pretty straightforward. Also, if you need to issue debt, fine, issue debt. If you don't, I'm serious about, consider redemption, a program. So you have that cash flow available so you can use it the next year, whenever the plans or is to issue debt for other CIP. I'll give you a second option. You can always let the tax rate go down. That means you've got to increase it in the future to bring it up. And over the years, it's been political saba that just keep it stable. Citizens are pretty smart, just long you paying off debt, this is fine. So manage it. Takeaway, next one, real quick. I'm not going to spend much time, but here, focus on the '22 year. Eight point seven increase compared to last year. Our total tax rate is fifty-eight, but it's allocated sixty percent to the MNO, forty percent to debt. We added five hundred thousand dollars of redemption to pay off five hundred thousand dollars worth of principal early. Remember that. That's why you see a little tick up there. Second of all, over the five years' average projection, you've got a twenty-two increase. Over the twelve years, a three point one. I don't see the eight percent happening every time. Okay? It'd be beautiful. One of the key things I want to address here is how active and how developed and how aggressive we are working on development. It plays into this whole scenario too as well. It's very important. Just because you want to do CIP, you also got to be astute about your economic development, because that feeds into everything. I know you'll know that. I just want to say that for the public. Next. Real quick, I'm not going to spend time, it's dropping. A lot of flexibility, no need to rush. Figure out what you want to do, and let's do it. Next one. Okay, back in the... Thank you. December last year, I came to you and I showed this allocation right here. I tell you, I used a one point one percent increase in TV. Well, it didn't come in at one point one, it came in at eight. Our tax rate kept at twenty-seven, so this is the allocation. And I also had a one point six next year, which is twenty-two, which came in eight. Then I used a three, a two, and a one. Why the difference between this and this and then one? It's because, as you recall, we've got some abatements out there that are coming off. I.e., Tax Calipular, Ashley, and Heneka, Hovika? It's a tractor.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is where I left off in 2020. You have all this. Then I came back in August, the last meeting. Hit it. There you go. We said, "Okay, let's, we want to do twenty million dollars in '24, and we want to do five million dollars in '25." That was the decision then. There was no need, the only thing we did is five hundred thousand dollars redemption, because we didn't have any debt requirement for '22. So everything kind of stagnated and stayed the same technically, okay? So that's where we left off here. Now, let's go to where we are at December 2020. Oh, maybe not. Any questions? I'll make sure, because now it gets a little muddier. We're good? Good. Next. I'm not going to spend, next one. Okay, let's talk about the December 2021 debt capacity. Two factors. Think last Tuesday, y'all approved the TERS. I think, hit the deal. I did two scenarios. I did a very conservative scenario, as you see here, which I'm using right now in our system on our debt capacity. And bottom line, over eleven, twelve years, you're losing about three hundred thousand dollars in debt capacity. No sweat. Okay, next line. The same thing, I decided, let's double it up. I use a two point six aggressive. We're close to seven hundred thousand dollars over the twelve years. Really minimal. So what that's telling you, this debt capacity assumes the TERS are ready, taken out. Any future growth. I left the beginning base in it. Next. Now let's talk about the December 21 debt capacity. As you can tell, let me start down here. Twenty-five million dollars where I left off, now we've got a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. It grew by a close to nine million dollars. What caused that? We got the eight point seven increase in appraised value. We did some minor redemption, which still helps. We did not drop that tax rate all the way down. We actually dropped it by point zero zero eight one. Not even a penny. What I mean by stable, that's stable. Then you get this kind of results. Now you've got a hundred and thirty-four million dollars to play with. Any given time, how do you want to? Hit it. December? Now. Huge difference. The only reason this is different is that, because we brought a half a million dollars forward. Remember that? There was no need to hit this, because I take the larger savings from the end. Now, hit it. Don't put it that fast. Now we've got ten million dollars in '23. Question to council, what are we going to do with that? Well, we've got a bunch of CIPs. We're going to reshuffle things around. We've got, we tell you we're going to take something out, that leaves you about eight, nine of it million dollars. Then we're going to put some in, and then we can come back and make some proposals to you. Does that make sense? But basically, you, there's ten million dollars that popped up in your credit line. Okay? Now, remember this. In '24 and '25, we say, we want to do twenty million dollars in '24. In '25, we hadn't already established a five million dollars. Do you remember that? So how do you do that? Hit it. How? Go back. Let me hit it one more time. Hit it. All right. All right, stay right there, if you want to do that.
There's no coaching, Gilbert.
Go back up.
Go back.
Go back. I did this slide. I like this slide. And it's a factual slide. I mean, we're here again to go over the CIP. Hey, it was fun last year. I'm making it fun this year in twenty minutes. Every year, we go through this. You've got to evaluate your CIP. It's a given. It's not going to be fixed, okay? At the same time, you're going to evaluate your finances. You can figure out, what can I maximize, how much cash can I put at it? And the slots that I need to issue debt, I fill that in with debt capacity. If I don't need the debt, preserve it. Maintain the stable tax rate. Use that cash that you can generate and bringing some debt in. Or bring it in to pay off debt to fall in line with your CIP plan. Makes sense? I'm not saying get rid of that. You have that flexibility. A lot of cities would wish to be in this spot right now. Next. Next. So what I'm saying is here, this is... Feliz Navidad. Okay. This is where we're at. Here's ten. I'm just making something up. It doesn't have to be this. Say, "Council, we want to stick to the plan we had before, twenty and five." Okay, fine. What we do, we take this, some of this, and we move it out. In other words, we're going to redeem some bonds and force that capacity to go a little further out. Does that make sense? Which translates to this, okay? So I'm pushing it back. So in reality, I'm taking nine million dollars and paying nine million dollars in principal. I have savings close, but one point six, point seven. That's an estimate, by the way. If we don't want this, after we come back in March, it might say, "We need to put money here." We might look, put money here. Hey, you might want to say, "I need to do something here right now to get some of these projects done." It can be moved back, okay? Or staff has come back to you and said, they give you a plan, said, "No, I don't like that. I'm going to do something here. I need to put..." Overall, council say, "I'm going to put ten million dollars there." All right, we've got ten million dollars there. So you have that flexibility, okay? Questions?
I'm going to make a quick comment, Gilbert.
You go right ahead.
To use an example. So obviously, one potential large project is the Public Safety Headquarters building, right? Which we said might range from twenty-five to thirty million. Now, that's not to say that all twenty-five or thirty would come from this debt capacity, because there are other things that we could look at. For example, VSCDC can help support some of that over time. We, I don't think we've probably have ever done a sales tax revenue bond.
Yes, we have.
We have? Okay, so that's an option, to do a sales tax revenue bond and pledge it through our sales tax revenues. So there are options on how to sort of get to the target on the Public Safety Headquarters front. But some of it would have to come from this. Part of what council needs to think about is, how much debt do you feel comfortable us issuing in any given year? And that type of direction would be helpful for us to sort of strategize how we space things out. Because for example, if, let's say, worst-case scenario, or let's just say twenty million, right? Let's say twenty million out of this debt capacity would go towards Public Safety Headquarters facility. I just got done telling you that it would make sense to do that in fiscal year '24. Well, you're already, we're already pledged at doing twenty in fiscal year '24. So if we add twenty to that, that'd be forty million dollars in debt that we'd be issuing in fiscal year '24. Is that palatable? That's the sort of thing that we need to get a sense for from council. Not necessarily today, but that's the type of conversation that we need to have over the course of the next few months.
But do you think that's kind of also dependent upon what type of projects? So adding twenty million in '24 for a Public Safety Headquarters building doesn't require the same type of project management
Correct.
that roads would?
Correct, absolutely.
So I mean, there's some thought that has to go into that as well, not just a number.
Correct. But I guess my point is more on just what you feel comfortable with, right? Because historically, the city has, of course, issued COs and not done GLCs, which we can do COs, and there is no cap for how much COs we can legally issue. It's just a matter of preference, policy direction, you know, the level of comfort that you feel doing that. Obviously, something for a Public Safety Headquarters facility would be a one-time thing, right? So even if we added twenty million to fiscal year '24, that's obviously not something that would happen, you know, every year. And if there is one year where we happen to issue a ton of debt, obviously, we would have to just educate everybody, the reasoning behind it, and why we all felt that it was important to do it, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But just food for thought, those are the types of things that, you know, we'll have to talk about over the course of the next few months. And of course, on top of Public Safety facility, there's other things. Downtown projects, you know, currently, the CIP doesn't account for the next thoroughfare project. Well, obviously, the thoroughfare project, once we plug it in, is going to necessitate some debt capacity. Our program currently only runs through the end of '26, right? So obviously, we'll have to kind of leave some debt capacity on the table for the remainder of the decade, so that we can, when it's time, have the conversation about what that program is going to look like. So there's a lot of things to think about.
Well, and the Red River Drainage Project would be another one. The analysis you're using is the same, even though I don't think the charts would be the GO and CO debt capacity. They'd be the utility, but it's the same concept, right?
On the utility side, yes, in terms of how much debt, how much debt you feel comfortable issuing. Same thing. It's all a matter of just policy direction at that point. So, a lot of food for thought. Let's wrap it up, Gilbert.
Hey, rip my mind. Beat it.
All right, we don't need that one.
I don't, I didn't hit that. I'm done.
Okay. So last topic for today, we left the best for last.
Really?
We did.
Okay.
Yes.
I feel hurt.
Yeah. So, Thomas, sorry you don't have a lot of time.
What he really means is, last meeting, he let me go first, and I took half the meeting. So this time, he made sure I was last on the agenda. Fifteen minutes is...
I can confirm that that was intentional, yes.
Fifteen minutes is all we need. Mayor, Mayor Protem, you'll remember that in March of this year, in this room, Mayor Protem Salis convened an ad hoc committee to review the city's charter and make recommendations for amendments to bring the charter up to date. Tonight, the Charter Review Committee is presenting its recommendations to you. You have a white three-ring binder in front of you, but before we get to that, the committee chair, Michael Atkinson, would like to make a few remarks about the work the committee did.
Thank you very much. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I do have a prop. I think some of you have heard it said that some work from son to son, but the work of the city council is never done. Well, I'm pleased to report that the work of our Charter Review Committee is done. The city charter is our constitution, our governing document, the framework by which we govern ourselves. Given that it is subject to the higher laws of the state and federal government, it is critical to the operation of our city government and its relationship to the citizenry. It was our task to see that it remains consistent with higher laws, provides a legal, consistent, and fair means of self-governance for our community, and it looks to anticipate future changes in law, and provides that it looks to anticipate and to maintain local government in the face of disasters and loss of elected officials. I want to thank our committee. This was a team effort. Jonathan Hall, Dwayne Crocker, Tony Niebel, Jeb Lacy, and Decatur Joseph. I also appreciate Dwayne Crocker for remaining after the election to city council. I asked him to remain, and he played a valuable role. I want to thank city council for the confidence shown to my appointment as chairman. I was honored. Thank you. As chairman, I observed our committee was intelligent, well-informed, brought a range of experience and insight to this effort. All participated, bringing a range of thoughts and ideas to every point considered, discussed, and debated. Most of all, they were considerate of all points of view, respectful of each other's opinion, and always kept the best interest of our city in mind. There was no partisanship. There were no unyielding demands. It made my job as chairman a lot easier. I didn't have to herd cats. My mind goes back to the words of General Patton to his staff in World War II. "If everyone's thinking alike, nobody's thinking." As chairman, I encouraged ideas and debate. Sometimes lengthy and very interesting discussions ensued. Every point was thoroughly considered. We voted on every decision, and we were unanimous. In every vote but one, there was one dissenting vote. That's fine. I think this should serve as a reassurance to council and to citizenry about the quality of our work. I also want to thank the city attorney, Thomas Gooch. Thomas provided assistance, guidance, experience, and advice we needed and appreciated. Thank you, Tom. I also want to thank Charlie Zek, our legal expert, consultant, and advisor. Charlie brought a lifetime of experience and dedication to the study of city charters and local government throughout Texas. His book, An Analysis of Texas Home Rural Charters, which was an applied research project for a master's in public administration in 2008, is a valuable reference for the creation and maintenance of city charters in Texas. Charlie provided suggestions, advice, guidance for the committee's consideration. He did not dominate our thinking, nor was it his intent to do so. Charlie could see from thirty thousand feet what we could not. A special thank you to Charlie Zek, who's due, and to Thomas for bringing him into this process. It's not my intent to wade through the details of our recommendations at this time, but rather to provide a broad overview. Our committee had five meetings totaling about twelve hours in the council chambers beginning in May. This was not counting the many hours spent by committee members in private study. This was the binder that I produced. We were guided by a number of principles. First, to meet current laws and legal requirements of the state and federal government. Meet future changes in state and federal law with flexibility. Example, not rewriting each change. To incorporate all the details of current law into our charter would make it lengthy. And every time that law changed, and they are subject to change, we'd have to rewrite it. So we made reference to those laws. Also, to address current and future challenges. For example, mayoral and council succession, disasters and death that affect a reconstitution and continuity of local leadership. This is what we did not do. We did not attempt to change our governance or the structure and operation of our city. We did not attempt to change any local laws or codes. No consideration beneficial to any special interest was even considered. Here's what we did do. We took a fresh start. We considered past history as wisdom for the future and maintained those time-proven principles. We focused on our charter. Our consultant, Charlie Zek, did not propose some standard form charter for our consideration. This is our charter, beginning to end in the same order. We eliminated obsolete language that made the charter easier to read and understand for everyone's benefit. We eliminated conflicts with current legal environment, because there were conflicts with state and federal law that had to be addressed, and so we did. The result, I believe, was a flexible document that does not require constant revision in the shadow of a changing state and federal laws. Addresses what it can for Victoria's benefit and defers to higher law as necessary to avoid legal missteps and potential litigation. It addresses current and future challenges. Example, mayoral succession, disasters and death that would require a reconstitution of continuity of local leadership and governance. Future proofing. Our committee worked hard to anticipate future challenges and incorporate, as best we could, points that could be useful should unforeseen situations arise. So now, is our job done? Well, mostly. Our committee remains to answer your questions and assist council as you review and perhaps modify our recommendations. Likewise, we are here when the time comes to offer this to the voters and to help move this effort across the finish line. Considering the need to revise our charter and all the time and effort put forth, we hope for success, and will assist council in any way we can to bring about this success. Once again, I thank all the members of the committee, the city attorney, Charlie Zek, for their fine work here, and thank the council for your confidence in all of us. Thank you.
Michael, thank you and all those committee members. I know that after talking to you and to Dwayne throughout it, it was some good discussions. Like you said, very long meetings. I think they even lasted sometimes longer than city council. I think they even lasted sometimes longer than city council. And Thomas, thank you for leading that effort. Very much appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for calling the committee into order.
Thank you. Thank all of them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
I want to echo the thanks to Mike and the committee for the work that they did. It was challenging and exciting to work on. All that I have left for you this evening is to help you navigate the notebook that you've been given. I just want to walk through what's in there. It will take some time for you to digest this materials before council actually has formal consideration of these recommendations in January. On Tuesday night, I'd like to do a little bit more detailed review of what exactly these measures and propositions are so that both you and the public can get a 30,000-foot overview of what you're looking at going into the holidays. In the notebook, there's an initial memo that introduces much of what's already been said. And immediately behind that, on page two, begins a red-line document of the charter. Let me pause here to say that both this red-line document and all of the measures and propositions will be on the city's website next week so that members of the community can also see all of these documents. If you look at the red-line sections of the charter, you'll notice that there are comments in the margin that refer to different measures, measure A, measure B. There are measures A through N, recommended changes to the charter. And so you can use those side comments to flip to the appropriate tab and see a little bit more detail about why that change was recommended. But if you just want to see what changes are being recommended in the charter, front to back, you can start there on page two and work your way through that document. If you'll flip with me to tab A right quick, I'm going to use this as an example to show you what all of the other tabs are. Tab A has at the beginning, at the top, Proposition A, and below that, Measure A. The proposition is the ballot language that you will propose to the voters. As you know, city council cannot amend the charter itself. The voters have to do that. The proposition language is all that will be on the ballot for the voters to see. The measure language below that will be on the city's website. It will be in city council packets.